Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January the 16th, 2024 Board of Selectment meeting. Let me introduce everyone at the table this evening. We have Buck Oldham, our Town Administrator over here, selectwoman Kathy Castren Ellis, Jason Naves, Mark Parento.
Oh, you forgot who he was?
Getting old. Edward Watson, my name is Daniel McDonald, and I always neglect to introduce our camera guy over there behind the scenes. You want to, you know, put the spotlight on you. Chris McCory, please join us in saying the Pledge of the Allegiance.
Pledge of the Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands for the Constitution of America, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Public comment. Do we have any public comments this evening? We don't. Discussion impossible vote. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
I've also served nine years on the Republican Party. I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Camera man. Mr. LaCorte.
Don't make me yell.
Yeah. Give us some decimals.
Sorry about that.
Lisa O'Connor, Groveland resident, as well as Whittier Tech representative.
Testing.
Okay.
Do you have to stop from scratch?
People can read lips. It's okay.
Okay. I'm Lisa O'Connor, Groveland resident. I'm also the current school committee representative for Whittier Tech. I have been for seven years, and I also served on the Pawtucket Regional School Committee for nine years. With both committees, I've also served on the building committees, which is a lot of time to put in. So...
Can I stop you for a second? Are you here on the building project?
I am on the building project.
All right. Because we have that coming up, number seven, so I wanted to try to just...
Okay. Are you taking comment then, or is it just for the board to discuss then?
Well, no. We're going to go through it at that point in time, but I just... Some people had asked for public comment, but I wanted to consolidate it so we're not having public comment, and then we can't discuss the public comment, right?
Okay. So can I get up and speak then when it's on the agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. I mean, anyone have an objection to that? But just procedurally, if you want to make a public comment, we're not to deliberate over that. So if you want some interaction, I think it's appropriate...
Usually, public comment is public comment, and you don't interact with the committee during the agenda.
Right. But I added it as an agenda item.
Okay. Thank you.
All right?
Yep. That's fine.
All right. Approval of a streetlight location on pole number 105 on School Center Street. It's a request from Corinne Camelowitz.
Mr. Chairman, you missed one.
I did? Oh. I'm batting zero this evening.
We can only go up.
Update from town, our town clerk, Elizabeth Coniff, on elections and the streets and et cetera.
Thank you for inviting me.
Welcome.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak to the residents at home and here. You asked me to come in to talk about elections, census.
I invited you, if you wanted to.
Yes. Yes, I did. Thank you very much. So just so that everyone knows, there'll be five elections for the 2024 year. I will start with just a comment with the first election, which will be the Whittier election, which is next Tuesday on the 23rd, and it's from 11 to 7:00. This election falls under a different Mass. General Law. It's Mass. General Law 71, Section 16, and Mass. General Law 71, Section 14D. And that is the reason for the restriction in the time. So it could only be a minimum of four hours, maximum of eight hours. So the election will run from 11 to 7:00. I'm going to put this down. And just to clarify, one more item. The Board of Selectmen have misspoken on a few occasions that the town clerks chose the date of January 23rd. That is incorrect. The original date was chosen by the Whittier, which was in February, and it would have been during the early voting for the presidential primaries. So we met with them, and we... They changed the date, and they had to bring it forward. They couldn't bring it back. February was as late as they could go, so they went up to January. The only thing we voted on, which was the hours, and that was the 11 to 7:00. So just to clarify that. Nope. That's a gut. Sorry. I have my notes. All right. So just one more item. Because it falls under different Mass. General Law, there's no option for vote by mail or early in-person voting, but absentee voting is always allowed for every election. So therefore, absentee voting is allowed for this, but it runs under the laws under absentee. And then on to, I guess I'll go to our local election, which is going to be on May 6th, and our town meeting, which is going to be on April 29th. Nomination papers will be available on Tuesday, January 17th. There are 14 open seats on the ballot this year. The last date to pick up nomination papers is... Well, let me say, the first date I told you was January 17th to pick up nomination papers. The last date is Thursday, March 14th at 5:00, and the last day to return your nomination papers is Monday, March 18th at 5:00. The last day to withdraw, if you change your mind, is Wednesday, April 3rd at 5:00 also, and ballots will be ordered on April 4th. The last day to apply for a vote by mail ballot is going to be Monday, April 29th, and there's early in-person voting available. Well, that'll be determined, I guess. The board of registrars have to meet to vote on it, and then I'll bring it to the Board of Selectmen to vote as well. We will do advanced opening of ballots if we need to, and that will occur on May 1st. Do you have questions and want me to stop at this point and go through any more detail? And I'll move on to the state elections?
For the 14 seats?
The 14 seats are... Thank you. There will be two seats for the Board of Assessors. We also have a ballot question to follow up on our town meeting last year. Town meeting last year, we voted to change from elected to appointed, but that now has to go on the ballot this year. So the two seats will be on the ballot as electable, but the question will also be on the ballot to change from elected to appointed. So by law, they both have to be there. So there's one seat on the Board of Health. There are three seats on the library. There are two seats on the Board of Selectmen, one seat for the cemetery, one seat for the Electric Commission, one seat for the Housing Authority, one seat for the Moderator, one seat for the School Committee, and one seat for the Water and Sewer Commission.
Any questions, Brad? Jason? Mark? Edward?
No. I'll sit.
I don't. Thank you very much for coming in.
One more. Can I go on to the state, just because there's so many coming up? Presidential primary is March 5th, and the last date to register for that is going to be February 24th. The last date to ask for a vote by mail is February 27th. Early voting in-person will run starting on Saturday from 10 to 4:00, and then it will be Monday through Friday, and they are regular operating business hours. So the last day is March 1st at 12:00 noon. We will also do advanced opening of the ballots for the presidential primary, and that's scheduled for Wednesday, February 28th. With the number of potential ballots that will come in by mail, we have chosen to do advanced opening for all of the elections, which gives us the opportunity to open the... Anybody who voted by mail or early in-person, at least 24 hours before we schedule the advanced opening, we open those ballots, and we run them through the machine. Those tapes do not get run. We don't look at any results. Those tapes get held, and then on Election Day, those tapes go back into the machine, and we get the final results. So on Election Day, we'll have two sets of tapes, everybody who voted in person on Election Day, and all the advanced ballots that were processed prior to Election Day, just in case anyone was interested. That's the process. 2024, like I said, is going to be a very busy election year. The state is going to send out postcards to every registered voter. So we gave them the list as of January 5th. The postcards, they're doing them town by town, so the last of the postcards will go out by January 20th. You may choose to vote in all elections, which would cover our local election as well as the other three state elections, or you can choose just one or two elections, whatever your choice is to vote by mail. So that's what your application is. It's for you to request a ballot to be mailed to you, for you to return. If you request a primary ballot, if you check off on the card that you want to vote for a primary, and you are an... If you are listed as an unenrolled registered voter, you have to choose a ballot choice at that time on the card. So you make your choice on the card of what ballot you would like mailed to you. You can have a Democrat, Republican, or a Libertarian. Those are the three eligible choices this year. If you choose... So as I said, you can choose one election, you can choose all elections. That's up to you. If you do not want to vote by mail, and you send your card back and say you don't want to, the way that they wrote the state law, if you don't return a card after each election, the state is going to mail you another card when it's a state election year. So please don't get frustrated. If you really don't want to vote by mail, just toss the cards. But the state is obligated to send a card after each election if they haven't received a ballot application from you, or if I don't have you listed in the system as asking for a ballot. So lastly, I will say that your vote is very important, so whichever way you choose, please come out and vote, or mail and vote, but please vote. And then for the reminder on the street list, the street list went out the beginning of January. If people... It's a census. It's called a street list census. On the bottom of it has your dog registration. We ask that you return those to us. That keeps you as an active registered voter in Groveland. If you fail to return the street list two years in a row, I'm obligated to remove you from active to inactive. So the only way to then come in and vote is for you to show an identification when you come to vote. So please return your census and make any changes to it that are necessary. And on the bottom are dog registrations. All dogs have to be registered annually, so please check your rabies. Make sure you have a valid rabies on file with us. If you don't, please send in a new rabies, and please register your dog. It is a... It's important, and many people in Groveland at this point are not registering, and I really hope that this year we can turn the corner, and people will take care of their legal obligation and register your dogs. Okay. We added a change of prices this year, unfortunately, so it's $10 for neutered or spayed, and it's $20 for dogs that aren't fixed. But we also added for any residents over 70 that there's no registration fee. So hope that's incentive for many people to come and register. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Do you have any other questions?
Thanks for coming. Edward?
With the five elections, how's your budget looking for the... All the elections?
They fall into two fiscal years, so I should be okay, because the... There'll be three elections under this year. Whittier is going to reimburse the cities and towns after we pay the expenses for this election, so it won't be anything added to the budget. The state just sent out information that they may begin to reimburse for local elections as well as state elections. And the only issue I have is that in order for me to pay people or to ask people to come in, I have to have that in my budget, even though the state may reimburse afterwards, and that goes back to the general fund. So at this point, to answer your question, hopefully, the budget looks all right.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I'm adding more next year, so that's one of my increases in my budget line is for poll workers, to cover the three elections.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we'll go to the... It says approve. I guess approve or disapprove. Streetlight location on pole 105 on School Center Street, request from Corinne Camelowitz. Is Corinne here this evening? Can you come on up and...
Just make a motion to get it on the floor?
I'm sorry?
Can I make the motion to get it on the floor?
Sure.
Make a motion to approve the streetlight location on pole 105 on School Center Street at the request of Corinne Camelowitz.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
That's fine. In a minute.
We're going to vote until approved that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Yep.
Come on up. Come on. Welcome this evening.
You got our votes.
Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Corinne Camelowitz. I live on Lori Court in Groveland. I have driven from my address to get onto School Street several times, and when it's dark out, you can't see your hand in front of your face. Since the rail trail has gone in there, I'm more concerned, because there's a lot of foot traffic there now, and there's no street light for several yards down the road. So... And then there are children that walk to school in the morning when it's still dark out on that road as well. There are children living on that stretch of the road, so I did ask Mr. Snow to go down and take a look as well, and he agreed that it's pitch black down there, and it's just not acceptable. So...
So you want a street light there?
Well, I'm streetlight.
Make it safer. Just within our jurisdiction, or is it the electric light department?
No, we can do this.
We can do this?
Absolutely.
We can order it?
Yep. Let's do it.
All right. You want to talk about it?
Nope. Let's do it.
Jason?
Kevin already put his two cents in here for approval, and so does the police chief, so I think we're good.
Joseph DeMore. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting.
Joe DeMore, Nine Cherry Tree Lane. I've had a streetlight outside my bedroom window for 28 years. I'd gladly donate it if you want to. I'm not joking.
We'll have to add that to the next agenda, Joseph, you know. And I don't know, anyone else have questions?
Almost. It surely makes sense.
More lights, maybe LEDs, maybe solar, you know? We want to be green, you know? I mean, you know...
If you come from Groveland Center and take a right onto Center Street, your headlights are hitting the opposite side of the street. When you come from Georgetown, at least you have your headlights, you know, giving a little bit of light towards that rail trail, but otherwise, like I said, you can't see your hand in front of your face.
I'm just curious, procedurally for Becca, maybe you would know, or Kathy. I went to the light department, just look into it and take care of it. Why is it on the Board of Selectmen?
Because we own the poles.
We own the poles.
That's right.
So that's our jurisdiction and our authority is with the pole owners.
I guess so.
But maybe we don't own the lights, so we'll let them put the light on there. Anyone else?
I'll sit.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote on it. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Let there be light.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I said pole, but we own the property, not the pole. The electric light company or Verizon owns the pole. We own the property.
The Hevman Eastman?
We... Right away. We own the property.
Gotcha. There you go. Approve the field use permit for the use of Washington Park by Groveland Youth Baseball League. Mark Quett, and this is for the period March 1st, 2024, through September the 19th, 2024, to accommodate the spring, summer, and fall season. Time of use varies. Is Mark here this evening?
Yeah, Mark. Mark's on the...
I am here.
Mark, welcome. You have the...
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
You have the speaker.
Awesome. Yes, this is for the Groveland Baseball League use at Washington Park. It is starting in our spring season, depending on when weather allows us to get on the field. Hopefully, the snow melts quick, and we can get on as soon as we can in the spring. We usually put in some work on the infield and everything before we get the season started to prepare the fields for the season, and this carries us through our spring season, through our summer tournament games, and into some instruction that we do in the fall. Not much changes year over year. We've actually had numbers increase over the last couple of years with our program since coming out of COVID, so it's been great to see the community coming out for baseball. We just opened our registration and launched a new website for 2024, so we're getting excited for the season, but happy to answer any question.
You mentioned there are not too many changes. Are there any changes in the prior years? You've been down there for quite a few years, and GBL's done a great job, and I get used to play and appreciate everything they did. But are there any significant changes in your scheduling or the use of the fields?
No, not this year. If anything, we have more participation at the younger levels. We've been maxing out the field use with practice times at all the levels, so it's been great to see the increased participation at our younger levels coming up within the league. But the schedule is going to remain fairly consistent year over year.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Kathy?
Nope.
Jason?
No.
Mark?
No. I'll sit.
All right. I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the approval of the...
Do we have to make a motion? Come on.
I'm struggling this evening.
You ought to make one.
I'll make the motion. I make a motion to approve the field use permit for the use of Washington Park by Groveland Youth Baseball League for the period March 1st, 2024, through September the 19th. That's got to be wrong, right? It's only... Oh, March through September, right? September 19th, 2024, to accommodate the spring, summer, and fall season.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and we appreciate...
Thanks for all you do. Keep up the good work.
The support. I appreciate it, and thanks to Rebecca as well for all the communication and help since she's been on board. It's been great. Appreciate it, everybody. Thank you.
All right. How are we doing? Next, we have a public hearing, but it's time-sensitive under the statute, so it needs to be at 7:00, so that anyone that got notice could be here at 7:00, correct?
Could we go ahead with appointments?
Yeah, we're going to skip it. I'm just explaining why, if anyone's looking at it, we have to wait till 7:00. All right? So be patient. We'll get there. Following the rules. What do you want to do next, Kathy?
If you don't mind, appointments, I thought would be fast.
Anyone have any objection to skipping ahead to appointments? All right. Number nine, appoint Mark Hubbard, Pinewood Lane, to the Finance Board effective January 17th, 2024, through June 30th, 2026. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mark Hubbard, Pinewood Lane, to the Finance Board effective January 17th, 2024, through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mark. Number 10, appoint Anthony Coriselli, North Street, Georgetown, to public grounds and cemetery supervisor for the Groveland Highway Department effective January 19th, 2024. This is a non-exempt 40-hour-a-week position at an hourly rate of $31 an hour. Is there a motion?
Motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have to recuse myself. My husband's a cemetery commissioner, so I'm still keeping arms length.
Four in favor, one recusal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, number 11, appoint John May of Big Ave Epping, New Hampshire, to the position of full-time dispatcher for a probationary period effective January 16th, 2024, through January 16th, 2025. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint John May of Big Ave Epping, New Hampshire, to the position of full-time dispatcher for a probationary period of January 16th, 2024, to January 16th, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Cruising right along here. All right, I'm not going to do the fire department yet on the regionalization issue.
Mr. Chairman, on that issue, I was going to, when it came up, propose to table it to allow myself some time to meet with the fire chief, because I understand there's a little confusion about what I was thinking about and what I'm asking a question about. I'd like to have an opportunity to clarify that and then get it back on the agenda, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Well...
Should I make a motion to table it now? Would that be better?
Yes, oh. Why not?
We have five minutes.
You're not ready? It's your issue.
I... Yes, I have some questions I want to... I'll go over with the fire chief. Yes?
Okay.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to table regionalization of fire and EMS services.
I'll second.
We can't discuss table, and so all those in favor? It's unanimous. We'll table it. Easy one here. Number eight, accept the resignation of Sophie Pettit from the Recreation Committee effective January 16th, 2024. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the resignation.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Thanker for a service?
All those in favor? All right. It's approved, 5-0. Four minutes. You think we can do number seven, Kathy? Four minutes.
No, not in four minutes.
I could do it in four minutes.
I know you can. No.
Name that, too. Three notes. All right. What else is on here that I missed that we can do in four minutes?
All the unfinished business.
We only really have three minutes.
I'm looking at that clock.
I'm looking at this one.
Do we have official clock? All the unfinished business, Kathy.
Not three minutes' worth, thanks. Not for three minutes' worth, thanks.
Do you want me to go back?
Probably.
Probably.
Let's say yes.
How are you, Jason?
No, I'm good.
Mark?
I was just going to ask Rebecca if she heard anything about the Elm Park trees,
They, they obviously had a few of them snap in half. I wondered if we got it scheduled to trim them up yet.
So I know that the Highway Superintendent and Mike Dempsey have put together a CPC application to do a more comprehensive review of the trees in Elm Park and around town as well as Beasley Memorial Park. I believe that they are working also concurrently on a state grant to solicit more funding to help figure out what to do with the situation down at Elm Park specifically. As you saw, the weight of those recent snowstorms caused one of the trees to split. So that tree had to be taken down. So I did receive a slight update that they are working on it, but it was really kind of one of those types of updates. There wasn't much detail. So I can further ask if there's a better timeline, but with the winter, he didn't say anything was really going to start taking place until the spring.
All right, I had to kill two minutes. I'll ask about the, the town dam that's in disrepair. There were some discussions previously, maybe we can re-label that as a culvert or something so we're not subject to the, bird and some red tape. Do you have any info on that?
I do not, but we can put it on an agenda item. We can have the vote, the board take an official vote to send correspondence over to DCR and ask if they'll reconsider their, their categorizing of the infrastructure as a dam.
Okay. We'll do that. Next agenda.
I'd be glad to help out on that letter. Tell them we don't have a town beach anymore that's going to get swept away.
Put it on the next agenda and everyone can chime in on whether or not it's a culvert or a dam or anything else. All right, do we have seven o'clock yet? We do?
Yep.
All right, we have a public hearing, number four. Pursuant to Groveland General Bylaw, Section 142-6, the Groveland Board of Selectmen with the authority to propose new amended or revised policies are holding a public hearing on January 16th, 2024 at 7:00 PM to review the proposed amendments to the personal policies and procedures as drafted and posted. Has everyone had a chance to read the proposed new amended and revised policies? Anyone want to talk about them? Rebecca, could you give us the, the synopsis on that and what it's for and what you've done and what you haven't done?
Sounds good. So I had originally been working, or this is one of the goals that we had put forward for the Town Administrator to focus on in my last term, and I've been focusing on trying to update the policies and procedures to be reflective of current laws and practices here in Town Hall. There is some initial discussions about trying to do a more comprehensive view, but once getting down into the details, it seems like there is a lot to undertake. The last time this was updated was in 2005. So there's a lot of things that are outdated, practices that are no longer in order or need to be more formalized, and Massachusetts general law statutes that need to be updated. So I took a look at that and just really kind of focused on updating it and getting it current and making sure that we were in compliance. And I distributed that to the staff back in late December. We had that presented to the board in early January. We did receive some comments from the staff that were incorporated as part of the redline changes. One such provided a memo, and that was included in your packet in the last meeting and is included in your packet this evening, as well as some updated commentary. I had been able to address as much as I possibly could that came through from comments. There was a couple of comments that I couldn't necessarily address. One of them was about asking for the classification study to be incorporated. We never adopted the classification study and it was never really formalized and/or finalized, so I was not able to do that, but we are taking steps to get that finalized so that we can incorporate it. The other was a mention of trying to do more of a vacation tiered policy or just updating our vacation policy in general. Because that's more substantial in nature and because that affects multiple different people differently and we have to really take a comprehensive look at it, I thought that it might be best to leave that and address that as a next section if the departments and/or that individual wanted to proceed with that. There were a couple of other minor things. There was mention about the using 40 hours for exempt employees. The reason we use the 40 hours is because it's under the federal law, FLSA. It wasn't necessarily to promote that anybody worked beyond 40 hours, but to be compliant with the law. There was another request to make a Board of Selectmen member the alternative sexual harassment officer that you would report to or that staff could report to if they felt that they had to. Right now, the draft proposes myself and the chief, not due to criminal nature, but because there should be two different bodies that are trained in order to receive that commentary and address it accordingly. So that's why that wasn't updated. And I think the last one had to do with, I think it was more sort of the new comments, which I can't speak to this evening, but everything else I believe that I addressed accordingly. Some other comments came in through other departments, mostly for conflicting language or an error that was done. But again, as I mentioned in the memo that I provided to the board, my main focus was really to give an updated document that we can use as a living document that we can move forward with and make changes. Not the end-all, be-all. It's not, we cannot change this, you know, in two months or what have you. It's just to give us a starting point so that we can move forward and we can make the comprehensive changes that need to be made, and we can give it the time and the attention that it needs when it affects individuals differently and that those individuals have an opportunity to weigh in, and we can form more of that working group that would allow us to have that back and forth with the employees. But I have had constant communication with the employees, whether it be stopping in my office and/or emails, so I feel very confident that I provided the information accordingly. And I would like to see if we can possibly move forward with the proposed changes, redline changes, and use that as our new foundation for making future changes as we go on. But again, I did just receive this evening another set of comments from the COA Director who's here this evening, so I'm not sure if she would like to present those changes in addition to what you see before you and what you saw before you at the last meeting.
Sophie, hear what you're saying. It's necessary to bring us into compliance with the law, correct? And you don't recommend substantive changes to, say, vacation pay at this point in time?
Not at this point in time, correct.
Okay. Does anyone have questions for Rebecca?
No.
No. Would anyone like to be heard on our public hearing this evening? Anyone for or against, please, please come up. Welcome this evening. Please state your name for the record.
Absolutely. My name is Alyssa Lee. I am the Director of the Groveland Council on Aging and I am also-
Can everyone hear her?
No.
We, can we get a microphone or?
He has one.
Again?
There you go.
Hello?
Is it on? Is there a button?
Yeah, there's a button.
It has a green button.
Test it out.
Is it good? All right.
Thank you.
I am Alyssa Lee. I am the Groveland, the Director of the Groveland Council on Aging and I am also a resident of Groveland at 5 Georgia Street. Thank you all for your time. Thank you Rebecca for taking on this huge initiative of updating the employee manual election to be amplified. Absolutely agree, right track is to make sure that the town of Groveland is compliant with the law. But I think as my notes sort of reiterated, the huge opportunity that is presented here to really showcase Groveland as an employee-first community and the values that you all need to account with. So you have my, my notes there and agree that, you know, happy to go through and happy to answer anything. I would just make one big note that I want us to be proactive when we move forward with these things. I want there to be accountability for staying with an agenda and not just sort of walk into our bi-monthly leadership meetings and whoever brings their hand, we might get called on to speak on. So I would like to ask that there be a written agenda on what points of the employee manual there's going to go through, when we're going to go through them, and to make sure that it's a timely and visible process for all. I know when I had asked about what was the outcome for tonight, the outcome was only sent to me, and again, I think I missed opportunity for visibility and transparency into town operations, share with everybody about what we were expecting to be done tonight. So I think that's my sort of overall agree. I would like a timeline of sort of make adjustments accordingly and kind of prepare. I would, Rebecca did note that the sexual harassment piece, I do think that's a pretty key one. I mentioned having a second person not be the chief of police, just because I feel, well, I don't know, I guess perhaps maybe I'm uneducated. I feel if I go to the chief, that I'm reporting the crime as opposed to where is that line of internal work? So it could be a select board member, perhaps it's another member of staff that I would just hate to be a criminal matter if not me being what it's not. That's the major one I, I'd like to do.
Anyone have any questions or want to respond?
I just have one problem.
Sure, Jason.
Yeah, in terms of utilizing the police chief, I think that's the best alternative just because in today's day and age, the police department has become such a social equity part of the neighborhood, and they participate in all aspects, and they're a great resource just to go down and talk to police officers. So it's no longer a criminal matter when people go talk to them. It's, it's more about helping and getting guidance. I've seen that a lot with my girlfriend's son who utilizes that a lot, which I think is great.
So well then, I wonder, and I can see that Sam has his hand up, if there's an opportunity for, a lot of employee manuals will say, name a person or a go-to person, but then somebody else at this particular level in the organization whom you feel most comfortable to go to and make that person a reporter. Yeah, I wonder if you would be open to that.
Okay, anyone else? Kathy? Sam, would you like to be heard? Can you hear me?
Sure. Good evening. Can you hear me? Good. So Sam Jocelyn, the Building Commissioner, I just wanted to bring up that, you know, I think communication was good. We had an opportunity to read the redline document, comment on it. Changes were made based on those comments. So I'm not sure, you know, I don't really need my handheld to walk through the document. I, I was able to read it. I'm very much for looking at, you know, benefits moving forward, but I think to jump in and do it at this time would have been, I guess, just under, I don't know, wasn't, wouldn't have time to be looked at enough when we were trying to, the changes, just to get some, you know, smaller pieces taken care of, some legal pieces taken care of. I know in the past, we've had others bring up benefits and benefit eligible positions, and I certainly think we should be proactive and leaders, but I think it should be done right and in a thoughtful manner. That was it.
Can I, can I add on to that in that, so the, the first revision was given to us late December, you know, the week in between, I think it was like the Thursday after, after Christmas. And then the, the hearing with the select board or just on the agenda with the select board was January 2nd. So that was very limited time. And then here we are at a public hearing, January 16th. Again, very limited time. Absolutely agree, yes, let's make sure that the laws are in place, but then let's have transparency into the process of saying, what, when are we going to talk about and discuss all 98 pages of this, of this book so it can be done in a mindful and thoughtful process and not rush through?
Right, and I think that at this point, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's why we have a public hearing. If other people choose not to get involved, that's their prerogative. And like Rebecca said, we've been, this has been on the vine for quite some time. So this is a first step. It's not the end-all. This is a living document of some sort. So we're doing something about it. So people can watch tonight, and, and, and everybody in town has a voice. So if we don't do enough or we're inadequate in some way or there's unfinished business, anyone, including yourself, myself, anyone here, can chime in, talk to myself, any member, elected official here or Rebecca and say, I think you missed something. Okay? So, you know, we're not rushing it. In fact, it's, it's just been dormant for so long. If anything, we picked the ball up and here we are. So if there's anything within the 97 pages, 97, you're welcome to address them this evening. And if we can't resolve those issues and draw our conclusions, certainly we can address those at a later point in time. But it's just, there's only so much we could do with a 97-page document in a Board of Selectmen meeting, okay? We could all get popsicle headaches if we want to just sit here and go through every single line item on it. I don't think it's necessary. It's out there. People are welcome to read it, review it. We have a Town Administrator and she's very involved in this, and I appreciate everything she's done on it. That wasn't, that wasn't my idea to put it on the docket, but, you know, it was someone's. You know, to me, it's procedural, where all need to comply with the law and whether we put it in print or not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Law is the law, so we need to comply. And anyone who has issues with sexual harassment, certainly they have legal rights and, and, and there's, 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 there's an avenue of recourse to address that.
Yeah, no, it wasn't.
And codified and, 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 and so, and I'll just give you my perspective, right? I am an attorney, but I'm, I'm not well-versed in that area of the law. So we can discuss what the issues are, and if there's something that we missed or maybe we need to run by our Town Council, maybe we can circle back on that.
Yeah, so my, my comments, as, as you will read both posted January 2nd and here on January 16th, eight pages each, are not on the law. The law is the law, and I'm thankful that Rebecca updated it and put it in there. This is more of an opportunity to really highlight, showcase what kind of employer the town of Groveland wants to be to be able to attack, to attract and retain employees here. I'm happy to go through all of them, as you said, I can, but if, if there's no action going to be taken, that's fine, and I understand, but I would like to see accountability held where, if it's later or not, but just something from, from you Rebecca, right, because you do implement this, is, you know, the, what is our timetable? What is our schedule where we as employees can come to you and, and have a really thoughtful conversation where we all feel good about why decisions are made and, and whether we agree with it or not, at least we know the why and we know the process and we feel part of the conversation.
Can I ask a question, ma'am?
Yeah.
I'm reading between the lines. I sense that, you know, you mentioned that, you know, you want, you want to make sure that we're attracting people to town government. Is there something that you believe we're not doing to attract people? Because we have a limited budget. We represent all kinds of interests here. We try to balance the benefits and the burdens, and there's only a limited pie here and a pot that, so to speak, to go to. We have to be cognizant of the taxpayers too, people on fixed income. So where, we might want to pay everyone, and maybe everyone in town deserves a big pay raise and more benefits and more vacation, right?
Yeah, no, that's, that's not why I'm-
So we have to live within our means. So is there something you specific that you want to address that we're not, we're not doing?
Yeah, it's not in regards to asking for more compensation or even more vacation time. It's, it's addressing the, the lack of visibility into the process of, of this. And, and again, I think there's just a huge opportunity to create a manual that is welcoming with, with new employees. And, and I think language, as we all know, plays such a huge role in, in tone and how one is perceived, and, and there's that opportunity here that, that you could be missing. But if there's, again, if there's accountability with an agenda in place of when we will discuss and take action on next steps, that's a huge step right there. And that's, that's ultimately what I'm asking for.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to come up? Mr. DeMar?
Joe DeMar, Nine Cherry Tree Lane. If we want to create a pathway to develop employees, attract employees, and we want to also create a platform where we minimize liability to the town, we need to go back to what was approved in March, in, in, in May of 2021, and that is the Town Administrator Bylaw. What we're, what we're doing here, what it sounds like to me is we, we have a 97, 98-page document that is trying to reconcile with a 2005 Personnel Manual. Of course, it's important to be compliant to the law, but what we continue to have in this town is this personality disconnect or this image disconnect and process disconnect where the Town Administrator is not adequately empowered to be the manager of the people that work for this town. If I was a police officer or firefighter- If I was a police officer or firefighter, I would know who my boss is. And if we can go back to, and I'm going to bring this up later this spring, the people overwhelmingly voted, overwhelmingly voted for the town bylaw in addition to creating our first town administrator position. But that position is not empowered to be able to manage people adequately, and this is why we're struggling. So I just want to call that to your attention. I will bring this up again in the spring. But I think a lot of the problems that we're having now in how to manage people, how to control liabilities, how to develop people and how to attract people, is missing because we don't have someone running the lighthouse. The lighthouse is, nobody in it.
Can I ask you a question, Joe?
Please do.
Isn't the position defined under mass general law, and isn't that the, isn't that the default statute? I mean, I'm just trying to clarify why we need the bylaw.
Sure.
If we don't have it, are we out of compliance, or we just, it's extra?
No, the default issue that you've settled with, which is state law, effectively shares the personnel management between the board of selectmen and the administrator. But keep in mind that the best model we've ever had for 50...
So you don't agree with that?
No, I don't. For 50 or 60 years, the best model we've ever had here in Pennsyltucket is the school committee. The school committee is not involved in day-to-day operation. This young woman just mentioned that maybe employees may have to go to a board of selectmen member, or maybe to Rebecca. I would be confused if I was an employee here. I need to know that I need to go only to Rebecca. But we don't have that structure because the state law that you approved basically is a hybrid, where it's vague enough that the control of employees can be either the board of selectmen or the administrator. What I've always proposed through the bylaws is a model that is similar to the school committee. The school committee is not involved in any day-to-day operations. They are involved strictly in governance and policymaking and approving budgets. There's the position that you should rely on for advice, and that is the position where day-to-day operations are conducted, and there is the position that would hear a grievance and bring it to your attention and so forth and so on.
Joe, that's how we've acted. I mean, we don't typically get involved unless it's requested. I mean, it's just the way it functions is Rebecca, uh, town administrators already, already doing that. So...
Well, that's good. If you're doing that by...
Do you have any examples where someone went to the board of selectmen, and I sense that you think somebody could go over her head? Is that...
Yes.
Is that my read on it?
Absolutely.
I don't know of a case where anyone went over her head.
Well, that's because we have a board of selectmen that respects the position, respects the person there. So we're doing that as a matter of practice, but 100 years from now, and I hope it's 150 years, but if Rebecca should ever move on, how do we recruit to that position where that question is not addressed? It's done because you're doing it as a matter of practice, but not because that person is legally, uh, able to do that because of the bylaw that enables that position.
Yeah, we're, we're getting off topic on this a little bit.
Yeah, point on, thank you.
So we can add it as a separate agenda item at another time, but I mean, it's just, you know, if you, I think it needs to be voted on at town meetings, so that we, we would have to, you know, um, follow procedure on, um, on adopting it in a warrant article, et cetera, so.
I, I appreciate that. It was voted on 2021, and if we need to bring it back, I'd be happy to, to lead that effort. Thank you.
All right.
I appreciate it very much.
All right. Anyone else on the hearing this evening?
The document that the town administrator brought to you is the foundation to start this process.
To start?
To start the process. She's been, she's been very, very clear about that. Every department head has been notified of that, and we've been very clear that in the very near future, we can start picking at each chapter and looking at that chapter.
Did you have enough time in advance of this hearing?
Yes, I had more than enough time. I met with her on two, three different occasions and discussed it with her.
Has she been transparent?
Very transparent.
Okay.
As far as the sexual harassment, the town of Groveland has a police department that is second to none in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They deal with civil and criminal matters on a daily basis, and they do it as professionals. So if the police chief is that second person, he can handle it hands down.
I think so, too. I think, you know, I mean, it's not necessarily, you know, indicative of some criminal issue, but I, I think the police deal with, interact with, uh, just, um, conflicts, uh, just in the course of their, their occupation every day, so they, they can, uh, you know, they can sift through it and, and have a good ear.
Correct.
And I, and I think that's where it starts, is with a good ear.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? So what do we...
Ask just a question, if it's not okay.
You can, you want to rebuttal, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna close.
No, I, I don't, I don't want to rebuttal, but I, I just want to ask what happens when, when we do go...
We can hear you. It's okay.
Um, when we, when somebody goes to, to the police chief, and this is a genuine collection, and, and I have been working in, in HR for many years, and...
But as an individual, as a person, what happens when we go to the police chief? I, hypothetical, I don't want to go to the town administrator, whoever it is, because I'm just not comf, I'm not comfortable with it. I don't want to go to the police chief because I'm scared that, hey, what I say to him or her, I don't want to get this person in, in trouble criminally. What protection do I have as an individual, as an employee, because we are an employee? Um, I'm, I'm not saying anything against the, the capabilities and incompetence of, of, of police chief. I'm just saying, as an employee, we need the option to report a workplace matter, um, with, with, with safety, with, with our own personal safety in mind. And so I, sincerity, what happens if we report to the police chief, and he's like, oh, there's a crime there? He can't not do anything about it, right?
But it sounds like there were two options, right? So you don't have to go to the police chief, you can go to the town administrator. So if you, you can pick and choose, but I mean, I mean, we could have three, four, five people, but you, I mean, there has to be a liaison or some sort of agent to discuss this with on, on behalf of the town.
Yeah, so that's why I was...
You have to communicate with someone. And if you're not comfortable with that, I guess you hire your own lawyer, and then you present it to the town. I mean, you, you have, you have avenues of communication that open.
And, and this is where I would circle back to the type of employer that, that the town of Groveland wants to be, and, and putting yourself out in public like that.
Thank you. We've talked about the police chief's role in this. Don't want to put you on the spot. You, you want to chime in, or you want to pass? Okay, we're good. All right. Are we ready to close the hearing?
If the board feels as though it wants to.
Would you like to respond to anything you heard about the adequacy, the suitability of the, uh, the two, uh, uh, agents, I guess, of the town?
I wanted to say, um, I noticed, um, because I read the whole thing, the redlined comments that were added were some of the things that you had asked for at the last meeting. So as far as transparency, it's transparent, it's apparent. The things you asked for have, some of those have already been implemented, and we're moving forward. So, um, I think the fire chief put it best, we have to start somewhere. And so I think we start here, and the transparency, to me, is, is very obvious. And I think as far as reporting of things, depending on what kinds of issues it is, it can't be willy-nilly, whoever these individuals are that end up taking some kind of a formal complaint, they have to be properly trained. And so you're not looking at the board of selectmen for that. I'm not saying we have no training, but our, we're a mixed bag, and, and we change over with elections. So you just, you don't want that. Trust me. Okay, and so, do we have to vote on this tonight? Are you going to close the hearing, or what?
What's the procedure on this, Rebecca? We close the hearing and then deliberate on it? Is that the, is that the procedure?
It would be to close the hearing, deliberate as necessary. And as I mentioned, I'd like to request to move forward and approve as redlined and amended with future updates to be considered in a timeline, to be provided to staff in order to make sure that they understand that it will become an, an item that we address as part of our, our bi-monthly meetings, and we will create a working group based upon those initial feedbacks, and we will make sure to include various different groups to make sure that it's reflective of the employees as a whole and not just a, a select few.
All right, very good. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard at this, um, public meeting? No one else? With that, I'll make a motion that we close the, um, the public hearing.
Second that.
Any discussion on closing? All those in favor of closing? All right, now we can deliberate. Kathy.
I make a motion to approve the, um, personnel policy, it is, um, as presented tonight with the red lines included, that are reflective of changes that have already been asked for.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving, uh, the red line changes on the policies and procedures, right?
The whole thing with the red lines?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Good. Let's go.
In favor? All right, it's unanimous. That doesn't mean it's the end of the story, folks. If there's something, uh, I'm always transparent. I said I had naked half the time. But, um, anybody who wants to chime in on anything in their government, your town, your country, approach Rebecca, myself, or any, any, any member of the board up here, and see if we can get it on the agenda. Next up, Kathy, did we already table that?
We're going to go to Whittier next, right?
Everyone's here for number six, I think. Whittier Vocational Technical School Building Project. This is a request of Selectman Watson, so would you like to start off?
If you please, Mr. Chairman, just a moment. I'm going to recuse myself and actually leave the meeting room, um, as I'm an employee of the Whittier Regional Vocational High School, and I've been so advised by the ethics attorney of the day. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I was at a meeting down in Newbury Court, uh, and I, I don't think there was anybody else on the board of selectmen, or I don't, I didn't see anybody there from the finance board. I did run into a couple of residents that were there. But there were a lot of things that were brought out. And one of the things that, that I didn't know, that was when, when the Whittier-Voltech was built 50 years ago, it was 100% paid for by the state of Massachusetts. There was no cost to the towns. When the Whittier Agreement was written, the town share to support Whittier is based on the number of students in, in each of the communities, grades one through 12. It's not based on the amount of students that each community sends to Whittier. That doesn't make sense. And that was one of the bigger arguments from, uh, Newbury Court. I think they were the second largest, uh, student population, so they paid the second largest share to Whittier. The, to amend the Whittier Agreement, which, uh, apparently it's being talked about in some of the communities, but it, it takes all 11 members to vote for it. And I think everybody, I think everybody is aware that, that, uh, Whittier, Whittier is outdated. Something needs to be done. It's the cost that's the problem. Right now, there are three voc tech schools that are being built in the state of Massachusetts. Whittier would be the highest. In addition, Whittier would be the third most expensive school in the country. And not for any additional students, they're expecting to keep it at the same amount of students. When, when you do a capital project, any capital project, you know the funding source. Uh, this is true if you, if you're building a house, if you're, if you're doing renovations to your house. You, you know what it's going to cost before you even start, and you know where you're going to get the money. You, you can't go to the bank and say, well, I'm going to build a house. Well, what's it going to cost? Well, I don't know. You know this all before, before you start. We didn't know that with Whittier. It didn't happen. The project was imposed on the, on the communities without a funding source. The 11 communities weren't involved from the start. And also, what raises a red flag, the people that will profit from the project, the general contractor, and the laborers' union Local 175 are funding the Yes for Whittier campaign. And that just doesn't seem to be, that just doesn't seem to be legal, but it is. The Whittier presentation gave us two options: pass it, or be on the hook for costly renovations. The cost of renovations would have to be voted on each year by the 11 communities that included into their budget if the vote failed. If it passes, we'd have to fund it with either an override or within our current budget. If it fails in an override, we take it out of our, our present budget, which would mean cuts to services or cuts to personnel. The, the project, if the project passes, it would cost Groveland each year $739,274 a year for 30 years. This would cost the average home about $280 a year, more in taxes that we can't afford. What about our senior citizens that are on fixed incomes? They can't afford this. The taxes just went up, so, some of them nearly $300 a quarter, just, just, what, a week ago, 10 days ago. We, we can't, we, we can't, we can't increase taxes anymore. But what you don't hear, there is a third option. The third option is a no vote, which allows Whittier and the 11 communities to work together to come up with a more equitable project, something that should have been done right from the start, involve all the communities, but they didn't do it. So, uh, they tell you that there's two options, there's a third. Vote no, and Whittier can set up meetings with the communities, 11, the 11 communities, and come up with a more equitable project. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mark?
Not yet.
Jason?
Not yet.
You know, my thinking on it is, it's kind of a, you know, it needs to be torn down all of a sudden. It's a trade school, and they're supposed to teach children how to maintain buildings and systems, and somehow they let their systems deteriorate to the point where the only option is to knock the building down. So, you know, to me, it's irony. I don't maintain your electrical and your HVAC system, but you can't even do it in your own building. So it seems like the shelf life on a school seems to be 50 years, and you demolish it and build a new one. We just got a new 7 through 12 middle school, junior high, high school, whatever you want to call it, and it's burdensome on people in town. I understand improving things. I like nice things, too, you know? Like a new Lexus or a Mercedes. But if you can't afford it, um, you just can't, like, write the blank check without knowing the funding source. I mean, who does that? Who goes and buys a house or a car and just doesn't know what it's going to cost? So I agree with, uh, Selectman Watson that, uh, you know, I think it's ill-conceived. I don't think it's a rush job. If it's been deteriorating for 50 years, let it deteriorate for one more year. We need to let, uh, the taxpayers have some breathing room in this town. And, um, I think it's a sin in Groveland that you could live here for a generation, for years, 50 years, and then you can't afford to live here anymore. You got to sell your house because, you know, uh, some people want to gentrify the town and get all the bells and whistles. Well, if you can't afford it, you don't have it. So I, I, I just think there's a, uh, the haves and the have-not mentality here, and I don't like it personally. Anyone who want to come up to the podium? We all have a voice.
I respect everything you guys said. Diane Plent, you're on Mill Street. I just want to bring everyone up to speed on the status of the building, per se. I went on the tour last Saturday, and I was, I had never been in the building. I was amazed at how horrible this place is for our children. Part of the building is sinking into the ground. There's water bubbling up in the sub, uh, electrical substation, water in the substation. This is like a huge fire hazard. There's an open flame gas heating system. There are minimal, minimal bathrooms for these kids. There are minimal, minimal bathrooms for these kids. There's like two stalls on every floor. I don't mean a bathroom with six stalls, I mean two stalls. There are tiny elevators. If you're in a wheelchair, you have to go up one elevator, you can't turn around in the elevator, you have to go all the way to the other end of the building to go up on the next floor and the next elevator. The building is 50 years old, as you said. The, uh, the auditorium has many lights out because they can't get scaffolding in there but once a year to replace the lights. Nothing is up to code, there's no sprinkler system. You know, this, this building was built 50 years ago. There's the original breaker panels, the fuses, uh, aren't even made anymore, so they can't replace them. The glass ceilings are all out of code, there's glass ceilings in lots of places. And the stairwells are dangerous because they're open stairwells. So, that's just the tip of the iceberg. The place, if you haven't been in there, Jason was there, um, he can attest to some of these things, um, you really oughta think about this, the, the way these kids are having their education. It's, it's a horror scene in there. Thanks.
In the Borg of Five Pine Wood Lane. So, I've listened to a lot of presentations, pros and cons, and, and, and I was here when the, when the building committee gave their, a presentation. I thought it was awesome, I thought it was informative, it was convincing. I'm going to vote yes, because I think that is the only logical option. We all agree, we all agree that this building needs to be replaced, and it's going to be a lot of money, but it's necessary. It's not a question of buying a Mercedes, it's a question of educating our children in a place that is safe and that gives them the best, uh, possible education. Now, we're talking about option. Option one is to, to replace the building. It's expensive, but I think it's an excellent investment. Option two is repairs. Repairs, uh, you shouldn't even talk about that. You can't repair the building. Option three is something that has come up, let's just pause this, because, you know, this was done in a rush, this was, this was not done in a rush. This process started in 2019. For four years, a committee of local representatives, people from our community worked on this. The select people were informed about this again and again, this was not done in darkness. So, four years, they considered nine designs, brought it down to four, settled on one, presented it to the MSBA. It was approved. The fact that it was approved tells me that it's a good design, otherwise they wouldn't approve it. The MSBA is going to pay roughly 40% of this building. We are not paying the whole 400 million. Now, if, if we don't do this, if we pause it, one more thing, if this goes forward, the building will be done by 2028. Okay, now we're gonna stop the whole thing, go back to square one. This, this process would, it was eight years. So, now we're gonna take another eight years, 10 years? Does anybody really think this building is gonna be cheaper in 10 years down the road? It will not. It will be much more expensive, and there's no guarantee that we'll get the state, the 40% from the state. We will get it now, we have it now. If we vote no, we will lose this money. I'm going to vote yes, because I think it's a good investment for our communities, for our region, for our economy, for our future. We need to educate our people, and, and we need good vocational schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
This project, Robert Valentine, 12 Merritt Ave., Fire Chief. This project scares me for one reason and one reason only. Town of Groveland has to come up with almost $800,000. Where are we getting it from? I'm here to tell you where we're getting it from. They're cutting your trash, they're cutting your library, they're cutting your COA, and, ready for the big one? They're cutting your fire and police, because there's nowhere else to get the money from. Right now, the Groveland Fire Department is two full-time firefighters and a full-time chief, Monday through Friday, just in case there's a problem Monday through Friday, because your call firefighters are at work. So, if you're gonna have a house fire after you build this new school, do it at night or on the weekend. If you're gonna have a heart attack, do it at night or on the weekend, because you're not gonna have any more full-time firefighters. You're gonna have no trash pickup, and I don't know where else they're gonna come up with the cuts, but they're going to cut, because you're never getting another 2.5% proposition override in this town. They got the last one by seven votes. It's not gonna happen again. So, they're gonna cut the operating budget of this town to nothing.
You mean if it doesn't pass?
If it does, no. If it passes. If it passes, the second part of, they have the vote January 23rd. The second part of the vote is we go to town meeting and we ask for another override. If they don't give you the override of $800,000, it comes out of the operating budget, and all the cuts that I just told you is where they're looking. Public safety, trash, council on aging, and the library, because we're not important.
Chief?
Yes.
Can I respond to that? You are important.
You can, you can respond to it, but I know that's what's getting cut. I've been listening to the conversations.
I'm not looking to cut the fire department.
You're not, others maybe.
All right.
That's my concern.
That's not...
The operating budget is gonna get cut.
All right.
Joe DeMore, Nine Cherry Tree Lane. With, uh, I, I, I thank you very much for this opportunity to, to, to present to you. I, I submitted a, um, document for your packet tonight, which has some 10 points, which I'll summarize very, very quickly. I'm mindful of my time and others that need to speak. And, uh, and I, this is not a public hearing, so I'm gonna make statements, but I'm not gonna make statements that would challenge you to have to say something back, 'cause I know you can't do that in a public comment. So, thank you for the privilege. So, uh, let me go down the list. This is a very expensive project.
Say again, I'm sorry?
We, we can, we can discuss it, it's...
Okay, that's fine.
That's why I put it on the agenda.
That's great.
We can back and forth on this.
Okay, good.
That's no problem.
So, th, this is a very expensive project. It is subsidized by the School Business Association. The School Business Association basically wants an answer by this spring, yes or no. And if we say no under any circumstances, they're gonna close the window, and then it might take eight to 10 years, like it, when we've happened with Penn Tucket, before that window opens again. However, I...
Why is that? Why can't they pick it up next year?
That's the process. It happened to us with Penn Tucket. When we said no back in 2008, '09, we didn't come back until just a couple of years ago.
So, you're saying this is now, or do you have to come back in eight years?
That's basically not me saying that, but that has been the normal practice of the small business association. So, with that backdrop, I'm going to still tell you that I am supporting a no vote. So, here are my 10 points. The project is $444.6 million, about $180,000 of that will be subsidized, there's also some grants and, and some rebates. So, we're not on the hook for the entire amount, but it's one of the most expensive building projects in the United States, and certainly the most expensive in Massachusetts out of the three, uh, buildings that are being built. In 2010, there was an investment, we paid, the communities paid for an investment of $3.3 million for a brand-new roof. That will be shuttered, thrown out. The new building will not increase the capacity for more students. In 2015, there was a facilities assessment done, and it was completed, and the school leadership was made aware that there were code upgrades, needed repairs, and some manageable or many manageable renovations that could have been done within the operating budget or existing capital projects. This school administration at Whittier has let this building go into extreme disrepair. The passage of a yes vote, this is really significant. The passage of a yes vote is not contingent on approval of either a debt exclusion or override measure. As the chief told us here, if we don't decide to either pay for the 30-year bond by debt exclusion or an override, well, then we're gonna be going to the Board of Selectmen and to Rebecca and show us where we're gonna find $700 and something thousand dollars a year. I believe, 'cause I sat in those chairs with you in the past, that that is gonna be devastatingly consequential to the services and the quality of life here in Groveland. The votes are aggravated, aggregated, which means that the total votes is what counts. It's a 50% or 51% simple majority. This is not the type of vote where out of 11 communities, if 10 say no and one says yes, the 10 win. You could have enough votes from one community like Haverhill, and if they produce enough votes and the remaining 10 towns say no, the yes measure passes. This is not like Penn Tucket.
It's popular vote.
Exactly, it's not two to one. Concealia Construction, the construction company, the contract builder that's already been approved by the school committee and the leadership at Whittier, has worked with an architect in Milton, Massachusetts. In Milton, Massachusetts, they have a tri-city regional vocational technical school. It's amazing. Also built in 1973, also supported by 11 communities, also just about the same number of students, also created a schematic plan that does not increase student capacity, and yet for $130,000 to $150,000 less per student. So, there is a precedent in Milton where this type of project can be built for a hell of a lot less money. The regional agreement at Whittier was adopted in 1967. Some of you weren't even born then.
I was.
I know you were.
They had to point me out, Jesus.
This agreement was actually created before Proposition 2.5. You think that that has an impact? The agreement can be amended but easily blocked by a single community, uh, city or town, school comember, uh, school committee members, even though I feel we've been well-represented, are not elected members. So, it's different from what we're experiencing here at Penn Tucket Regional Schools. Due to gaps in the conflict of, uh, conflict, uh, laws in Massachusetts, conflict of interest laws in Massachusetts, Concealia Construction and the Teachers Union have actually formed a "Yes For Whittier" vote campaign. It's very well-funded. I checked this morning, as of January 6th, according to their filing, they spent $30,000. So, it's a well-oiled campaign. And you know what? It's totally legal. If you don't like the arrangement, complain to your, um, elected officials, or, "Sorry, but there's a gap in the conflict of interest laws." A lot of people find that distasteful. But here's my problem with that. It doesn't speak to a spirit of cooperation. We're dealing with a highly politicized campaign. And now I'm gonna show you something, which I'm gonna, I'm gonna submit to you tonight. What I have here is a cease and desist letter. A cease and desist letter, ladies and gentlemen, is a letter from an attorney, in this case, the attorney Kevin Malvey, that was directed to Sean Reardon. Sean Reardon is the mayor of Newburyport. Mr. Reardon and Cassandra Gove, the mayor of Amesbury, received cease and desist orders. You know what? You know why? Because they did what you just did. They spoke against the project. They actually communicated to their constituencies and said, "We're gonna have some consequences with services, we're not gonna be able to afford this," and they got a cease and desist order.
Let's stop you for a second.
Yes.
I got free speech in the First Amendment, and people need to know how I feel about positions, okay? I'm not telling people how to vote, I only tell you how I see it. You could do whatever you want, so I don't advocate for the position for you or anyone else. I just tell you what my opinion is, and people have a right to know who I am if they want me to sit here. So, anybody who sends me a cease and desist order, knock yourself out, 'cause we have freedom of speech in this country, and anybody tries to intimidate me, good luck with that.
Mr. Chair, this is a public document, and I'll submit it for your consideration.
So, yeah, what happened to it? What happened to it? We're off topic, continue with your listeners.
What I have here is a statement of organization ballot question committee municipal form. You know what this is? This is, there's an organization that was formed in Newburyport called Reimagine Whittier. They actually have a very good no-vote campaign predicated on the concept, despite the risk of losing money and time with the SBA, of coming back with a third option, and that is to produce a lower-cost option, which I found there's a precedent of that with the same builder in Milton. Nobody knows about this, or few people do, because of cease and desist orders, because of gag orders. You think that that's fair? Is that a spirit of cooperation between Whittier leadership and our towns?
Was it court-ordered?
Yes.
It was?
About what, this here?
The cease and desist.
The cease and desist order, let me just say, my humble opinion as a non-attorney is a bit of a stretch. And I'll leave it at that.
Lawyers could ask you to stop doing anything they want to.
Now, there isn't any...
They do it every day.
There isn't anybody here in this town, on this board, who has acted anything other than caring for this town and within the laws and within ethics. But it's what I consider to be an appearance of bias. When I went to our town website, and I looked at our front page, and I saw vote 20, uh, January 2023, I found this. Now, this is not the "Yes For Whittier" campaign funded by the union and by the construction company, but this is the link directly involved in this project. And anybody visiting this, what would you think? If there was an elderly citizen that said, "Oh, I just found out we have to vote on January 3rd, 23rd," what would they see? They would see, "Building the future of Whittier. It all began with an idea," so some storytelling, "and then it's time to invest in the next 50 years of ide, ideas and dreams for our students." What would that person think? There is no dissenting voice, because they're silenced. This town cannot put up an opinion about yes or no, but this is an appearance of, by this town inadvertently, not because you're doing anything unethical or illegal, but inadvertently, you're creating a biased opinion here. This is wrong.
Can, can I ask you this, Joe? It's important what you're, what you're saying we're doing here, all right? Now, without getting too legal, all right? Do you think posting what somebody wants to advocate for is a problem?
Absolutely. If you post the "Reimage Whittier" campaign, the no campaign, on our website, you're gonna get a cease and desist order, because you cannot use public funds to sway a ballot question. However, the appearance of that still exists on our website.
Is it on our website?
As he states, the website goes directly to the school building committee and Whittier school building-specific website, but on their websites, you can, in fact, get to those campaigns. So, is it specifically on our website? No.
There's a link?
You, no. The link is to the school building committee webpage about the entire Whittier project, as well as the Whittier School District website, official website, like our town website, their official website. But on both of those websites, you can get to the, um, websites that, that Joe is asking about.
And it's that committee that advocates for this, so they can spin it any way they want, right?
Well, again, I wanna be very clear...
So, I'm not saying I endorse it by putting it on the web.
But the yes, but the "Yes For Whittier" campaign funded by the union and the construction company, that's not what this is. This is exactly what Rebecca said. This is the official school committee link to the project.
But that's their side, so you, they could, they could be pro and you could be against, nobody, no?
Again, a senior citizen that finds out that, "Oh, I've gotta go vote the 23rd," that's all they have to read is, "Oh, I have to invest money, because I have two choices here." Like, Selectman, um, Watson said, "I only have two choices. I either pay for this thing, expensive as it is, or we're gonna end up with," which, by the way, I do not advocate for, "a non-subsidized upgrade or renovation," because that's almost as expensive as the building itself. The renovation is without any state aid. I'm not an advocate for that, I'm not an advocate for a brand-new... I'm not an advocate for a brand new building, but I am an advocate for trying to position our town with a precedent set in Milton for a cheaper option, even if we lose that window and have to come back to it in a few years. Lastly, and thank you for your time, this is from Rowley, I'm sorry, from the town of Ipswich. The town of Rowley, Amesbury, Newbury, and Ipswich have been very significantly against this yes vote. They are campaigning, they have promoted concepts and information that is helpful to people. One of the most startling things that Ipswich brought out, which I didn't realize until I read this article, is that all, other than Haverhill, 10 towns, the percentage of what they need to pay for the cost of this building is significantly below the percentage of students going to that school. Therefore, 10 towns potentially are subsidizing Haverhill. That's unfair. I will present these as public documents for your consideration and I'll take any questions or comments.
Any questions for Joseph?
Not yet.
Okay, so what I recommend that you do-
Joe, are you okay with Rebecca's answer on that? Because I mean, I just, you know, I'm concerned if, you know, if you're accusing the town here of posting things that we shouldn't be posting.
Well, can I make a recommendation? You have the information-
We have links to boards and each board can form their own opinion and advocate for whatever they want to. It doesn't mean that collectively the town of Groveland's taking a position. I don't think we've taken a position on this, you know? My opinion is only my own. We all have an opinion.
It's an appearance of a bias and I do have a resolution to it. It's real simple. You have the information about January 23rd vote and then you go to the Whittier website, not the Whittier School Building website.
I understand, but hearings like tonight are publicized. This is part of the democratic process. I have an opinion. You have what? Everyone gets to listen and sift through it and form their own opinion.
As forceful as those other four communities, I recommend that you vote no, number one. Number two, issue a public statement to communicate the details as to why no, just like Rowley did and Newburyport and Amesbury and Ipswich. The board should adopt a position to deny the request and initiate discussions and then inform the Whittier School leadership that you are open for a discussion about a lower cost option. That's what I recommend.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason.
Well, I know I went to the tour of Whittier and I didn't find a building that was in disrepair. Most of the maintenance things that needed to be taken care of were simple, wouldn't cost much, and there was a lot of things that the students did take care of. As far as the electrical panels, we're on the same boat here in Town Hall. We have the same panels. There's no pots available for them. They have to be changed. The waste management, the wastewater management plant has met its life expectancy, needs to be replaced, also upgraded because the, there wasn't as many students when they first opened. They've met and got to their capacity. In terms of closing in to meet the codes of stairwells, that's a huge uptake. Now, where do you take the room from? The addition of bathrooms? When Whittier was built and designed, it wasn't designed as being a class school. The people that went to vocational schools were people that weren't expected to complete a high school program. And that, to this day, is still shown in the educational process. They don't issue homework. All the work is done in class. It's more hands-on. That's not what a vocational school is today and the school needs to be brought up to that. I mean, a vocational school today provides the workforce that helps stabilize our economy. They provide the workforce that helps us, allow us to maintain our infrastructure. Now, when you look at Milton, at $300 million, they started their process and they completed everything and they're breaking ground now. So that's four years. And with the incredible amount of inflation that we've seen in four years, what would that school look like in terms of the cost? When you look at the most expensive schools in Massachusetts with Lowell at $381 million, well, when I looked online in terms of what dollar we'd get you now, that's $483 million to $510 million, what you would expect that same school to cost. So it really becomes, what did we do with Penntucket? We put it off. How much more did it cost us? How much less did the state contribute? When you look at the Whittier school, because it was 50 years old, the technologies has changed to what they need to teach students. They need to have a lot more flexibility in moving and changing classes so they can adapt to the technologies and the jobs that are available now. They don't have that flexibility. And that's something that's being designed in the new school. When you look at the glass roofs that they have, they're out of code. The bathrooms are not only out of code but nonexistent because they didn't want people to go there. They might have two stalls in the bathroom, but you have to go get a key to access the bathrooms. So there's only one student in there at a time. And when you're dealing with 1,280 students, that's a problem. Where do you take that room to get those more bathrooms? To bring all that up to code? So those are the issues that I see not being so productive in waiting and trying to push it to a vote that forces them to come back and speak with us. In terms of representation, they had representation. Mayor Reardon was on the school committee for two terms prior to him being on the, prior to him being in 2021, the mayor. And in Newburyport as well as Groveland, on the Whittier committee, which of course those committees are elected, they have representation from Groveland, from all the 11 communities. So it's been, everything has been transparent. Now, I don't expect a lot from, in terms of the board here getting updates because the board of selectmen here hasn't been outgoing in terms of creating those type of relationships with other elected boards. You know that, Joe. So when you make comments online about inappropriate behavior and you signal me out, I posted both sides of that. And that was very misleading on your part.
Well-
Point of order. I want to, I don't want this to be personal. Let's just look at the big picture.
Point of order, it's a, point of order is this, Jason. You're an elected public official, so it took me a little bit of time to go back a week or two or three to find all of your posts to show that you're trying to present both sides. But again, as an elected public official, I have no qualms about you. We've worked together and you haven't, you haven't done anything unethical. But again, it's the appearance of a bias.
Exactly. That's exactly what you posted, was an appearance.
But if I, but if I only visited that, if I visited that website just once and saw your comments, I would say, well, there's an elected public official that is clearly in favor of this project and that's where you're wrong.
Joe, we can all be biased. We have a right to be biased. We're not a judiciary that's supposed to be blind justice here. We can advocate for things that we want and don't necessarily need or any reason we want to, okay? All right? We're all biased. Let's move it along. Jason, were you done?
Yes.
Anyone else like to be heard this evening? We're having a lively discussion. Everybody enjoying themselves?
So, it's nice to meet a lot of you who have been trashing me online face to face.
Listen, listen, state your name for the record and I-
My name is Lenita Andig.
I haven't trashed anyone. Don't, don't accuse me, but this is about issues, not people.
I understand that.
Please.
My name's Lenita Andig. I'm the campaign manager for Yes on Whittier. I appreciate you having me here tonight. You are correct, you haven't broken any ethics laws and I'm here to answer any questions that anyone would like, whatever you would like to talk about, the cease and desist, the mass general law, the contractors, the funding, the three options. I'm not going to cite anything that isn't law, that isn't fact that you can't research yourselves. So I could start with some misconceptions I think are common or you can ask me a question. It's up to you, sir.
I don't have any questions. I'm really, I'm a really like simple, low maintenance guy. I don't want to pay any more taxes. Does anybody not know me after 15 years I've been living in town? I don't want to pay anymore. And I think the kids, the children, the children, the children. I think most kids around here are spoiled, all right? I don't think they go without. And I think if you want to be educated, read, put your smartphone down, I call it a dumb phone, and try to learn something other than entertainment with your life. We have a culture in America that's all about entertainment. How about you learn something that's like useful, where you can go like make a buck and make a living and put food on your table? So, so-
A trade school, yeah.
I want to ask you this, right?
Okay.
How come you're in the business of teaching kids how to have trades, but you can't maintain your own building? Who's to blame for that? Who's accountable on that? How come the building falls apart?
So I think this is the first misconception, right?
Is it?
Yes. So I, between Yes for Whittier and Whittier, I don't disagree with anything you just said. The thing is, the yes campaign, right now where we're at, is a vote has been passed and the decision on the table is, do we fund a new building or do we do repairs? Everything else you're talking about that's valid about the school, about the maintenance, about the agreement, that's between you and the school district and the superintendent. And there's a firewall because of ethics laws between us and them. That's something that you have to and you can take up. Part of the concern is the regional agreement says that we are all, I live in District Two, my taxes are going to go up too. I ran Sean Reardon's campaign. I ran Melinda Barrett's campaign. I have a lot in this game. I'm not just some outsider. We, the regional agreement, you can readdress that, but it says very clearly that we all are on the hook for use and occupancy for the last 50 years. We have to decide something to do about the building project. What you want to do about the regional agreement, enrollment, that's between you and the school district and I don't have a fight with you on any of that. The way mass general law is, we've received money from MSBA, 177 million. So the district share right now would be 267 million. There is still a lot of money we can possibly shave off that because it's a value build. Kinsigley was chosen in a competitive process because they have a history, and you can look this up, this is all public knowledge, of coming in on time, on or under budget. We have a school in Haverhill right now, Constantino, which you can look up, which a debt exclusion was passed in June. I helped run that campaign and they are doing a value build, much like Whittier will do. We have shaved $30 million off that project since June from grants, from fender funding, from cutting things out. There's a, because of the MSBA process, there has to be strict state oversight and a building committee that manages the contractor. So that's first. We can take the vote right now as we can take the 180 million. We can do the 277 district share and build the new school, which I believe is more fiscally responsible. You're correct, though, the debt exclusion override is going to be critical and I understand that in my town too, for all of you, so that we don't have to cut services. All I can say about that is, the laborers' union, most of whom Lumen District and myself have committed to help the towns ask, pro bono, any way we can to help you get your debt exclusion passed. So that's a separate thing. We're not going to leave you high and dry if it passes. Let's go to the renovations. There's a lot of misconception about that. Mass general law is, if we pass 30%, if we have to do a renovation, the wastewater treatment plant's already failing, it could fail tomorrow, it could fail in 10 years. I don't know. I'm not pressing it. Mass general law is, if any project that happens, that has to happen, is more than 30% of the building, it triggers a full ADA compliant upgrade. That's the crap shoot we have right now. If that upgrade, if that gets triggered, it triggers the whole project, meaning that's where the 350 million comes in. So we have to do something that's 11 million there because something fails. Then we have to do the whole thing within three years and we don't have MSBA money for that. And this is where the biggest misconception is. Yes, there is a rapid repair program that MSBA will give you money for. The problem is, that's not what we were accepted into the MSBA for. We're accepted in as a new school. So if we vote that down, the 180 goes back and we have to get back in line for repairs, which is what happened at Penntucket, has happened at Triton right now. If, if, and it's an if, it's not for certain, if something happens, we have to repairs and the ADA upgrades triggered, then we're on the hook for 350 million. We have to figure out how to pay for it. It could be an override, it could be out of our budgets. That's 80 million more than a new school that we possibly also can still get money off of. There's multiple federal grants, there's multiple state grants to shave money down. So that's kind of where we're at with that, the third option. We can open the agreement. I'm not against that. It's not going to change anything. We're on the hook for use and occupancy for the last 50 years. It would be going forward. Also, to a lot of people's points, and I mean, I dropped the ball on things, this is, practice has been around for a long time. I knew about it and I understand, like if you haven't thought to have your, with your tech, you know, representatives in or they haven't kept you updated, there's a lot of people knew about it going back a long way. So this isn't a surprise coming. As for the process not being transparent enough, there was a lot of public meetings and I'm sure as elected officials, you've all had something that happened on the agenda. A tree was going to get removed. You posted it publicly. You probably talked about it. I guarantee you, there was somebody who missed that meeting and then they got mad at you about it. That's understandable. It's human nature. But there has been a transparent process. So, do you want me to cover the cease and desist now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, we did not file an ethics complaint or an OCPIF complaint because we didn't want to. We were getting so many people in the district coming to us upset that some communities, which tonight you have not done, you're excellent about saying, this is my opinion, which is legal. I'm not telling you how to vote. Exactly. I'm not telling you how to vote, which is not legal. You can't run a no campaign through, with city resources. There were some committees that were very clearly doing that, taking votes as a school committee, taking votes as a city council, advocating to have other sides, using city resources like emails, like city money for stamps. You can't do that. That's clearly against the ethics violation. We had so many people coming to us wanting us to file ethics complaints, which we refused to do. We sent a cease and desist thinking it would just be like, hey, this is what you can't do, let's just all play fair, FYI's between us. We didn't leak that to the press. The others, the no side did and it was a good plot. It was a good campaign tactic. It's not something I would do, but it was a good campaign tactic. It's got a little traction. But you haven't gotten a cease and desist because you haven't done anything and it was simply a cease and desist, this is what you're doing wrong, please stop doing it, we're not going to do anything about it. And that's all it was.
You can't use town resources.
Yes.
Now, we, to some degree, are using the cameras and the facilities here, but we're elected by the people, so it's incidental to what we do as elected officials.
You're not telling anybody how to vote so you can do that. You can discuss it in the merits.
I know, I know where the line is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's free speech.
Some people don't know the line, have crossed the line.
I can't use the town ladderhead and tell you how to vote.
That's right.
Can't spend a penny of town money-
That's right.
-to tell you what to do.
That's right.
But I could tell you, I don't want to do it.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
And no one can stop me, not even at Beacon Hill, because we have something called the U.S. Constitution. If anybody in Beacon Hill doesn't agree with it, because it's an unconstitutional state.
So we're on the same page about this.
Yeah, you know, they don't believe in the Second or some other Fourteenth Amendment. You know? That's my opinion.
It doesn't change the fact that we agree and we're on the same page about it and you have not broken the law, ethics law. Some committees have and we're on the line about it. We were honestly, because of my relationship, truthfully, with many of the mayors in those towns, we sent them a cease and desist quietly. Someone else chose to make it public. We haven't, if we wanted to blast people, we filed ethics complaint because that's serious. If you're of a town, you can look at the Brookline ruling in April, which they took very seriously. If a town is deemed not to be in compliance, they can do things, I mean, I don't know what they would do, but they can do things like make every employee take an ethics class. That costs you taxpayers' money. We thought the cease and desist was a nice way to do it. Some people agree, some people don't.
All right. What else you got to say on the, on the project?
Well, that's pretty much it.
I don't want to get into, we go too far.
Do you have, do you have questions about the three options? Does anybody have questions about the regional agreement or understand why? I believe it's the new buildings that are most fiscally responsible. It would raise your taxes should the debt override pass about $20 a year, or $20 a month, right? So I take that very seriously. Like I said, I live in District Two. I'm a huge fan of the firefighters. I don't want to see them cut. I don't want to see services cut. But- But our options here are, we're kind of locked in. We have to do something. We build a new building because we believe it's the most fiscally responsible, or we do nothing. The crap shoot with not doing anything is something breaks down, there is an upgrade, and that triggers the full thing. So it's, you have to decide what you think is the most responsible thing to do.
Address the board, please. We have protocol here, all right?
Sorry.
Please.
The trigger is, if something, will use wastewater treatment, is to fail. And that upgrade costs more than a third of the current value of the building, which is 33 million. It triggers by state law a full ADA compliant upgrade, which is where the 350 million comes in. And we can't get out of that if that happens.
All right. We have some, a question from Sam, right?
Yeah, thanks.
A building inspector.
I'm Sam Jocelyn, building inspector, but I'm also a resident of Haverhill. So I work in Groveland, live in Haverhill. This affects me in a couple of ways. I was just wondering if she could speak to the, the cost. Because that, I certainly agree, we need a new Whittier school. There's lack of tradesmen out there. We need that training. What I'm choking on a little bit is, we just built a Penn Tucket regional school that roughly houses about the same amount of students. It was originally supposed to be about 160 million, came in around 140. And we're looking at triple plus to build this school. And I'm just having a tough time figuring out where those additional dollars come into play that it's at the price that it's at.
You and everybody else, I certainly have the graphs of the building breakdown that I can share with you or share with this committee. Inflation costs have skyrocketed in the last two years for the price of buildings. Constantino in Haverhill, a few years ago, was 200 million, right? Trade schools tend to be more expensive. That also brings me to the point that it's the third most expensive school in the country. There is literally no citation I've looked or evidence based on that. There is plenty of evidence on the MSBA website for inflation. You can look at, that show it's not even the third most expensive school in the MSBA pipeline today. And you can verify that, because you can go look it up. So if somebody has, if somebody has a citation, it's the third most expensive school in the country, I want to be accurate, please share it with me. I've looked. I had my interns look. I've had people really good research look. And we simply can't verify that statement. But yeah, it's very expensive with inflation costs. To Jason's point, I hope I don't mind if I call you Jason. What's it going to be in a few more years? I mean, it's already gone up probably 100 million from what it was three years ago. And there's nothing we can do about inflation.
Building inspector, you know, as a building inspector, I do see inflation costs. But three times the amount of a similar school in that many years is where I'm.
And they're more expensive by nature. They're always more expensive.
I, I get it.
Come on, come on, come on. We speak one at a time here, on camera, public, public meeting. Sam, are you all set?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to get my head around the, the price tag, because it just seems like one heck of a jump, even being a vocational school. If we say, you know, Constantino's 200 million, we'll say this is 250. Throw in another million, 100 million for vocational school. And I'm still about 150 million off in my, my head, that I'm just trying to get around. That's all.
Constantino isn't, so once the MSBA, I'm sure you know this, votes on a price. It stays that price until we start the value build. Constantino was accepted to the MSBA system five years ago, before inflation went up. So inflation has an incredible part of this. I can send you the building breakdowns. We have it on our Facebook page, but the exact cost breakdowns of the build, the exact cost breakdowns of the repair, the inflation graph, whatever you'd like to see, I'm happy to email to the board.
I don't want anything on inflation.
If you would like it, I can get it to you.
Anyone who wants to know about inflation ought to be looking at the money supply at the Federal Reserve Board, because they add digits, okay? And during COVID, they went, they increased the money supply 40% and watered down the currency. So it's, it doesn't happen except for the temple of the gods down there. We have no control over it. They keep, keep running it up forever. So you do a projection on inflation, it breaks at some point. It breaks.
Oh, also, and this is another point, the MSBA caps the funds we can spend. So it's not a blank check. It can't be. We can't spend a dime more than what they voted on. And that's the 444 million. And that's another reason why Sigley's so good at coming in at.
Is that the high water mark is 440?
Yes, that's the high water mark.
That's the most you can spend. But if you approve, if this is approved at the ballot, then people could be on the hook for 440 minus whatever the percentage is.
267 million, yeah. That's the district share after the 180.
Based on the 440?
Yes, and then minus the 180 from the state.
All right.
So we're basically voting on 180 million to accept that or crap shoot for the repairs. It would be 80 billion more.
All right. Anyone, Ed?
I listened to your presentation, but I, I didn't hear anything about the expense of $9 million for a driveway. Can you explain that?
You know, that's interesting, because that is a paved driveway. And I've spoken recently to the fire chief in Haverhill. The Haverhill Fire Department's coming out in support of this project this weekend. And they, that's something that I expect to be shaved off, its cost savings. Because he's told us, we don't need a big wide driveway. We just need a gravel path. A fire truck can get down. Part of the reason there has to be another access road is that's part of the ADA compliance. Because there's only one road going in, and there's been trees down across a couple of times. Fire truck can't get in. I've heard people talk about an active shooter situation. So that will be, that would be part of the upgrade, but the damage wouldn't be that much.
Does that mean purchasing property?
No, the mayor, the current mayor of Haverhill has agreed to donate the property to Whittier, which will also save money.
What community do you live in?
I live in Amesbury.
Amesbury.
I lived in Newburyport for a really long time, and I just moved to Amesbury six months ago.
You know, with, when, with the increase in taxes that it's going to cost all of these communities, not, not just Groveland, but Amesbury, Newburyport, Raleigh, Ipswich, et cetera, et cetera. The poor kids that are going to Whittier are never going to be able to buy a house in the town of Groveland, or any in the 11 communities. And that includes Haverhill.
I don't disagree with you. So my question, sir, would be, how do we?
Lower cost.
How do we get out of it?
You, you vote no, and then you go back and you renegotiate for a lower price. And it can be done at a lower cost.
See, that's the thing is, the agreement, it is what it is. We can't, it's not going, the agreement going forward, if it's changed, isn't going to change what we're on the hook for now. And they come up with a new building, that's 10 years down the road, and then we're looking at inflation again.
What you do, what you do, it's, it's, it's basic common sense. It's voted down. Whittier and the 11 communities get together, get a smaller project, less costly project, and then reapply to the state for the funds. And it may take a while, but you'll get it.
It will take a while. And but what happens, and what I'm concerned about, because I hear you. I don't disagree with you, but here's my concern, is I, my personal opinion, I don't think that we're not going to get into catastrophe, that we don't have to do an upgrade within that time span. And when we do, that's what triggers the rebuild that we have no money for. That's the crap shoot that I'm talking about, that I'm not willing to take.
Well, would you repeat your statement that, and agreed with me, that the students that are going to Whittier, that go to Whittier, with the increase in taxes in all the communities, aren't going to be able to afford to buy a house in those communities? And you agreed with me.
I, no, I actually don't agree with that, because I know a Whittier graduate who lives in Groveland. He graduated 18 years old. He started his own electrician business.
But we're not talking, we're talking about the future ones, after the, the increase in taxes. The taxes are ridiculous.
He's, he's 25 now, and he just bought a $150,000 truck. I'm pretty sure he can afford a house in this district. There's, the trades right now are the best way, in my opinion, for students to be able to afford a house in the communities that they live in. Because what are we going to add into it? Crippling college debt? And then they can afford it better when they're paying that off? I'm a fan of the trades. You're always going to find me on the side of the unions. You're always going to find me on the side of the blue collar worker. I respectfully understand if somebody has a different opinion. That's my opinion. And I also want to address the contractor and the laborers union funding the campaign. That's not unusual. It's unusual that it's leaked to the press and used as a campaign tactic. I've never worked on a ballot initiative at any level that wasn't funded by the unions. They're usually the ones who do it. The taxpayers can't do it. It's not legal. Just like, it's like saying, you run for the selectman, you run for city council, and the taxpayers donate to your campaign, and that pays for your campaign. And somehow, that's corrupting, now you're beholden to them. It's the same thing. I understand why it seems strange. I do. But it's really not. I've never worked on a ballot initiative. I've worked on a lot of them that hasn't been funded by the unions. It's just usually not leaked to the press as a campaign tactic, just like the campaign manager usually isn't. But that's okay. That's fair. That's their tactic, and I don't have a problem with it.
Let's, can we, let's stay on track of.
Okay, well, that was a hundred questions.
You know, it's just, we can go, no disrespect, but I mean, we can go to the nth degree on, on the why, and what's legal and campaign finance, et cetera.
I was just addressing what was brought up.
You know, I mean, everybody's got to comply with the law, or there's, or there's recourse. So, is there anything else in terms of why you advocate for this that you haven't already said?
I think that's covered everything that was brought up here tonight. If no one has questions, I'm happy.
All right. Jason had something here, and I ignored him. I apologize.
No worries. I just had a question for Sam. When you look at that 161, I believe that was after the funds that came from the state. That was the total cost of the school.
Oh, okay. And, you know, again, that's what I'm, I'm working with off of my, my spreadsheet as far as what I permitted and what they put as a value. So it sounds like they undervalued the school and I should up the permit fee.
I could be wrong. I'm just.
I'm just kidding. We waived the fee. It's fine. The only other question or comment I had, and if that's the case, that's absolutely fine. I just, like I said, I'm trying to justify in my own head, how do I vote yes for this? And is it a reasonable amount? Because, yeah, I don't want to pay more taxes. I'm with Dan there. But at the same time, I do realize we have a responsibility to provide services for our residents. So I'm very torn. The only statement I will have, I keep hearing over and over, this whole, we'll trigger the, the accessibility requirements. If, like Ed said, we were in a process of seeking an alternate solution with the intent to potentially tear that building down at a later date, the, the Mass Office on Disability would most likely give you a waiver or stay until that time. So it's only when you have no other plan. So I'd be very surprised if they stepped in and said, nope, sorry, you have to do it or we're going to start fining you because you're seeking out alternate options. But that's just been my experience with the MOD.
All right. One more?
I'm Stephanie Bartelt. I live at 18 Chestnut Street. And I guess I just wanted to ask a few questions. Number one, do you remember the Whittier project being presented by the town administrator on November 21st in 2022? Because it was presented then. So that makes me ask another question, which is, I wonder how many meetings with Whittier were missed after it was already brought up at one of our Board of Selectmen meetings here in 2022? I'm wondering if you guys have been to Whittier to see the condition that it's in? Because I was on the tour too, and it's pretty scary to watch water bubbling up in an electric substation. It was pretty remarkable. I'm wondering what the point of a vote by the Board of Selectmen is when it's up to the citizens to be voting for this project. It's not up to them. It's up to us as voters. I'm also want to point.
Excuse me, it's going to the ballot?
Correct.
Yes, it is.
But Joe is asking you to make some sort of vote, to vote no for this project.
Who said I'm going to do it?
All right.
You could, you could ask the moon to star in the sun. I don't know you're going to get it. You could ask for whatever you want here.
Great.
Let's just talk to the board.
I have another point. The point that the school in Milton actually has 315 fewer students than this one does. And also, they don't have.
Could you speak to the board?
They also don't have.
You have to address the board. That's the rule, not private conversations here.
An automotive collision program. They don't have a machine tech program. They don't have a masonry program. So they have many fewer programs and 315 fewer students. I'm also wondering if Rebecca can possibly explain the discounted tax options. I want to point out that this is for the average homeowner. I don't even mean average. It's $575,000. If your house is worth $575,000, then you will be paying approximately $264 more per year, which, as was stated, is about the price of a pizza a month. So it's $264 a year. And that's based on the calculator on the website that is linked to our town page. There's a calculator that you can calculate your own cost that's going to be projected. So I guess, do you, it's, what is it? It's $400 per year?
Address the board, please.
Rebecca's going to answer the question. Thank you.
Now, you know, follow the rules. Rebecca, would you like to respond to the, the price of a pizza?
So the calculator is based upon your assessed value. So it's based upon what your house, it's per, the increase is per the assessed value of your specific property. So that's why it changes. So it's not going to be the same for you as it's going to be for somebody else. So that's why that calculator comes into handy. So when they're taking that average number, they're taking the average, the average assessed value in Groveland, and they're using that as a calculation. But you would go onto that tax calculator, and then you would put in your information, and it would calculate per your assessment what that proposed increase would be to your tax bill.
Rebecca, do you have an average? There's a lot of averages, and there's deviations from that. Is there an average price in town? And what's the average? You know?
The average price, I believe, is 263 or 260.
So somewhere in the 260 a year-ish, plus or minus on your increase in the tax.
The average annual tax increase is about 264. And the average assessed value that they're using is 575,000. And that's based upon the member share for Groveland, which is the $21,272,926.
So those are the assumptions.
Those are the assumptions.
Okay. Do you have a response?
If your house is worth 575,000. But here, my question, I guess, is, and I stated it poorly, I apologize, is if there's a discounted, you can request a rebate in your taxes if you're 65 or older, or something, and then there's another $1,000 rebate you can get if you do something in the town? What's, what is it that they?
So there's the tax work off program, and then there's the senior tax circuit breaker. So there are two different programs that you can apply for, based upon whether or not you meet the income thresholds that have been established. So there are ways that you can get a discount on your taxes if you apply for those, as you can now, not just in this case, but in everyday case.
All right. So those are the assumption facts within a parameter. It's about 260-ish dollars a year, or $22 a month.
So for 30 years. So the life of the loan would be 30 years. So where in Groveland, we have a current student count of 35, which gives us our operational assessment of 2.7%. But the capital is based upon the, like, the collective member of students that are eligible to go, and that's 851, which gives us a percentage of 4.2%. So our cost per enrolled student is about $317,698. And our estimate.
Per student?
And our estimated debt service for 30 years. At a proposed 5%, depending on what the market is, is that 723,335, which totals what they've told us is our, would be our share plus interest, which would be the $21,745.
There you go. All right. Sounds like you know your stuff.
All charted.
I like the numbers.
What's your name, sir?
Max Borogard, 44 Seven Star Road, 10 years at Whittier as a science teacher. The building is in bad shape. There are not good fume hoods. Chemistry is unsafe. There is no gas. The gas has been shut off in the building. So you remember doing things with bunsen burners? Well, that's gone. Doesn't exist. Half the sinks in the science labs do not work because the drains are made of glass, which is broken somewhere in the concrete. So in order to get those to repair, they need to demolish parts of the building to fix a drain. So it's easier just to shut off the sink. So I have one working sink in a closet in my chemistry and physics classroom. The other chemistry teacher who's retiring this year, she has one working sink out of six in her classroom because they've been shut off. So just if you're, if you want to know about some of the conditions in the science building, you know, that's just a snapshot. I teach physics. One of my favorite illustrations of things being out of level is to put a bowling ball in the middle of my classroom and watch it roll to a corner, because it finds the low point in the room, and it's not level, not even close. And it's all concrete, so you can't just shim it up. It's, it's got to be replaced. Groveland's got about 38 students out of 270, give or take, at Penn Tucket. I'm assuming Penn Tucket's about 800 kids. Sam was asking about numbers. If Whittier, Whittier's got 1,280 students, that's 50% more than Penn Tucket. So that's another reason for the increase in cost. Plus, we've got 24 voc. Penn Tucket. So that's another reason for the increase in cost. Plus we've got 24 vocational shops that Penn Tucket doesn't have. Huge overhead costs for running, upkeep, building those areas for our students. Um, you think of all the businesses in town that use Whittier's kids on co-op, Baldini Plumbing, Daniel's Electric, Groveland Auto, Hastings Floor Covering, Groveland Dental, Our Little Wonders, uh, daycare, right in the, the strip mall there, Chesterton, Greenwood Autobody, Union Machine, which is in behind Ultimate Perk, ITel Tech, Ultimate Perk, a couple contractors you might've used for different projects, Jim Stupany and Garrett Burridge. They've all used Whittier co-op students and graduates to, to work there. Uh, projects around town, like some of the park benches, the snack shack at Shanahan Field, VZ Park, all sorts of things that, that Whittier students have worked on throughout the years. Um, so Whittier is part of Groveland. Groveland is part of Whittier. I hope people listening at home can, can feel that. Uh, my own two boys, they're two and four, and I hope in about 10 years, I'm getting them to apply to Whittier because I want them to go to this new building. I don't want them to go to the building that is going to be decimated in 10 years if we don't pass this. Um, and if, if any of those kind of Pulitzer emotional things don't get you, you're going to pay more for a worse product if we vote no on January 23rd. Pay less for a better product and vote yes.
Let's try to wrap it up.
Hi, I'm Lisa O'Connor. Live on Byfield Road in Groveland. I've served on the Penn Tucket Regional School Committee for nine years. And then I've also served on the Whittier Tech School Committee for seven years. I served on the Penn Tucket Regional Building Committee for four years, and I've now served on the Whittier Tech Building Committee for three years. I've also served on numerous other, um, subcommittees as well. Um, I find it interesting and a little bit scary because, um, you know, I've been doing the building committee now since 2019. And just like yourselves, the meetings are posted beforehand. There's, you know, open time for public comment. Even the school committee, you know, the school committee meetings, they held the same way. Um, and the building committee meets every other week. The Whittier Tech School Committee meets once a month. There's only been one meeting, and it was last month, that people came forward to speak at the public about the building. Nobody has ever come forward. Um, again, I've served for a long time. And when it comes to the building project, I am your Whittier Tech person. I'm your representative. I was appointed. I take my job very seriously. Nobody here has contacted me with any questions. I wasn't invited to tonight's meeting. I happened to find it coincidentally on Facebook. Um, needless to say, there's so much stuff on Facebook that is inaccurate about this building project. But I am not going to go out onto Facebook because that's not a good venue for me to go out and correct people. But there's been very many public meetings. People don't attend them. And like I said, um, to date, I've only had two people, two people in Groveland reach out to me with questions about the building project. Um, you know, I have two, two kids. My kids are adults now, but they went to Penn Tucket. They went to Essex Tech. And they also went to Whittier Tech. Um, you know, it's just, I'm not here just as a parent. I'm here, you know, as a town person. I'm also here, I'm also serve as a, as a special education advocate. And I'm all about inclusion for all of our students. And that includes Penn Tucket as well as Whittier Tech. I have to make sure that, you know, all the kids have full inclusion and full access. And right now they don't because the school isn't even up to code. Um, if there's any children that are in a wheelchair, they can't even get to the fourth floor. They can't get into the auditorium. There's no sprinkler systems there. And also, you know, Massachusetts is willing to fund 40% of this project. And if we vote no next week, that money is off the table. We're walking away from 180 million dollars. It happened before with Penn Tucket. Penn Tucket voted no and they walked away. They went back again. It took so many years later to get back again and be accepted into the MSBA pipeline. And I'm afraid that if there's no votes, the no's win, we're going to be back to walking away from 180 million dollars that's already been scheduled for us to use. We're going to have to update a building, basically you're sticking a Band-Aid on a building that already has problems. And there's going to be more problems that crop up, even after we fix, you know, maybe the substation or the electrical issue or the heating or, you know, whatever it is, there's always going to be more problems. And, you know, again, I'm going to keep the kids in mind, the students, is that there's no disruption to their learning with a new building. It gets built behind the current school. The kids still go to their regular school. When the building is done, passes inspection, the kids just go into the new building. If we're having building brought up to code, I can't even imagine what teaching is going to be like for those students. Having, you know, construction workers in and out all the time, people that are not quarry checked, they're not fingerprinted. I mean, I would not feel comfortable if I still had a student there knowing that these people are coming in and out to bring a building up to code. And that was also a concern that I raised with Penn Tucket. Um, it just, you know, like I said, um, I just hope that people vote yes. You know, I, my taxes are going to go up too. I don't want my taxes to go up. You know, I'm, I'm like looking at retirement now. You know, I own a house. I don't want my taxes to go up. But if we vote no, our taxes are going to go up even more, bringing the building up to code. And that does not make sense to me at all. I know this is very expensive. I know it's probably going to come in under budget. I know there's going to be people that have come forward with grants. And comparing Whittier Tech to other schools in Massachusetts, it's like comparing apples to oranges. Unless somebody was accepted into the MSBA timeline the same time Whittier was, or it's a vocational technical school with the same amount of students or the same amount of technical opportunities, you, you can't compare them. They're totally different. Um, you can't compare Penn Tucket to Whittier or, you know, Milton to Whittier. And I know that there's also been, you know, questions about, you know, I'm going to vote no because there's no more seats, you know, no additional seats that are going to be offered in the school. There's a very good reason behind that. And MSBA also, you know, makes sure that they, they, they overrule that, just like they did with Penn Tucket. Penn Tucket, we could've gone bigger. We didn't. Student population is dropping. People just aren't having kids like they used to. The numbers are dropping. And if we would add seats, that means that it would take away students from our current schools. And that's not what we want to do. But we still want to be able to offer them seats. And there's a very stringent application process to go through, you know, for kids to get in. So maybe right now it might be, you know, Groveland has 38 students, but in four years, they might have 50 students. And Havel or another town might have less. It just depends on how you, you know, how the application process goes for each student and how, you know, the numbers fall out at the end and how many seats. And then there's always kids that get accepted, maybe they didn't get accepted in the first go around, but they can reapply and they can reapply in the 10th grade as well to get in.
Can I stop you there? Why, why, why wouldn't you accept everyone that wants to go there?
Some kids don't meet the application process.
We'll let them in and work with them. I mean, you want inclusion. Why not let everyone in? Everyone could go to the high school. Why can't everyone go to the Volk? Doesn't seem fair to me.
Well.
Add the capacity and open the door and make the Penn Tucket High School compete for their jobs and their education. And we need competition in America. All right?
I disagree with you.
Well, I disagree with you.
That's fine. You know, I just hope that, you know, people do think about their vote and realize the repercussions of a no vote. You know, we're going to be walking away from 180 million dollars. And to get back into the pipeline, the MSBA pipeline, it, I don't even see that happening.
I understand.
And the, the cost of building is just going to keep skyrocketing.
All right.
You know, and I, I am financially conscious. We've gone back to the drawing, like Ed said, go back to the drawing board. We've gone back to the drawing board as a committee. We've chopped off a lot of things that were unnecessary, you know, but we do need to bring, you know, a, a, a 21st century education to our students. That's, that's something that, you know, we need to be committed to. That's only right. Okay.
Want to wrap it up?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm, um, reading this letter from Rebecca Buffet, um, who is unable to be here tonight, otherwise.
Is she a resident?
Yes, she is a resident and so am I.
Okay.
Do you want my name?
Sure.
Leah Crane.
For the viewers and myself and the board.
For the viewers, Leah Crane.
Everybody, the people.
I'd like to, um, this is from Rebecca. I, I'd like to share some thoughts I've had throughout the process coming into the January 23rd vote for the new Whittier School. First, as far as the Acts of 67, the Whittier Agreement, why is that being brought up over and over again that this agreement has not been reviewed and amended? I see that as a lack of attention from the leadership in the 11 communities. It is unfair to state this agreement is outdated when all 11 communities and their governing bodies have overlooked it for 50 years. The accountability falls on the leadership of the 11 communities and not just Whittier.
We're not here on the agreement.
For the enrollment of Groveland.
We're here on the building project. Please stick that topic.
Okay. I cannot speak to the cost of the new building. From what Whittier presented, the school did work with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to create plans and cost effect and the costs involved. I'm not a contractor, would not know how to estimate the cost of a school with courses in, these are 21 of these, advanced manufacturing technologies, allied health cares, auto bodying collision repair, automotive technology, business technology, computer aided design and drafting, carpentry, cosmetology, culinary arts, visual and design communications, early communicate, early education and care, electrical, electronics and robotics, engineering technology, HVAC, hospitality management, marine service technology, marketing education, masonry, metal fabrication and plumbing and heating. 21, not compared to any of the other regi, the Volk schools in the area, um, which have varied between 16 to 18 subjects. When compared with other Massachusetts vocational schools and their building project, Whittier costs more, but also offers more, um, in vocational technical programs. I don't see that we can accurately compare the cost of the building projects due to the difference in the needs for courses requiring more than a general classroom. Whittier also shared that the average impact on Groveland residents, based on the average home value of 575,000 would be 264 per year or 22 dollars a month. I understand that any tax increase can be a burden for some residents, but again, I believe some of the accountability rests with our leadership. This, this town has had opportunities to have a prosperous cannabis business, but the idea was shut down due to closed mindedness. The argument that it was a concern for stu, our children, but where is the concern now that our children need a new school? There also have been moments recorded in meetings where the town leaders make it seemingly difficult for businesses to grow or even try to get started in Groveland. We hear that our elected officials are concerned with the financial burden, but we don't see them doing anything about shifting it from the residents to businesses. In the end, investing in our schools is investing in our children and our future prosperity. It is giving them a safe place to learn and be, and grow to be contributing members of our community. I also challenge our elected officials to do what they can to grow our current Groveland businesses and welcome new businesses. Thank you.
Again, let's stick on topic. We're not here to talk about, you know, whether or not we're pro-business or not pro-business. This is an agenda item about the, the building project.
Don't worry.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing all right.
Welcome to the Board of Selectmen.
I'm getting tired in five minutes. I have to hold it?
It works better if you speak into it.
Like this? Ooh, look at that.
What would you like to say about the building project and, and, and not whether or not you like your public officials up here?
Uh, you know, opinions aside, I'm fond of the work you guys do and I appreciate it. So thank you for that. My name's Jacob Cross. I, I live, uh, in.
Pour more milk down my sink than I get paid to sit here on a, on a Tuesday night. So, you know, thanks. You, everyone's welcome.
Well, you know, you're keeping dairy farms a business, sir.
Do it because I'm collecting for punishment, no other reason. Let's go.
Okay. Uh, you know, there's, there's been a lot of great input here on both sides and I'm actually really thankful we have a place we can have this discourse, the discussion. You know, I think this is really important. It's one of the greatest parts about the small community we have here, right? Um, I don't have a lot to add in the interest of time. I know it's kind of getting late. I gotta pick my dog up from daycare still.
We knew to add what you already heard here. Cause you know, we can all repeat it. It could be a parade of people up here saying the same thing over and over again. Do you have anything that you haven't heard tonight that you want to interject? And then we could, you'll have the final word this evening.
Oh geez, that's a, that's a heavy weight. Um, no, I don't have anything I want to repeat, uh, but I, I'm actually a graduate of Whittier and, and you know, we talk a lot about this as a building project, but you know, Whittier in a lot of ways is, is a lot more than a building. It's the people that are in it, right? Otherwise it's, it's just some bricks and, and the shape of a square. Um, and so I think, you know, in a lot of ways it can be helpful to understand what goes on inside of those four walls. Now, I, I graduated there in 2014, so I can't speak to the state of the building today. I think there's a pretty good report on that out there. I, I encourage anyone and everyone to go out and read that as we make this decision. It's probably the best pieces of advice and status you can give, more than human testament than anything else. Uh, this, you know, it's put together by an engineering firm, not my eyeballs, right? Um, at the time I was there, there was plenty of times that we couldn't use classrooms because the heat wasn't working. We had to step out of them and, and hop into another room. Um, you know, I'm a, I have a, uh, well, I don't want to overshare with y'all, but there was plenty of days I had to go home with a different pair of clothes on. I have an autoimmune disease that makes access to those bathrooms pretty darn critical and it's not in the greatest state right now. Um, you know, and as a graduate of Whittier, in my four years there, or three and a half, I should say, is the way the shop program breaks down, I, I, uh, finished up with a, a focus in machine technology, which led me to be a machinist. Uh, I finished up also with two years of experience as a machinist and went on to the company that I worked at. Uh, they sponsored me to, and pressured me heavily to attend school to become a mechanical engineer. Uh, and then employed me as one for two years thereafter, an opportunity which would not have existed for me without Whittier Tech. Um, I now work for a company and out of respect for my employer, I'm not one to shareware, but local to this community. And, you know, every time, I should say this way, we have a, you know, a, a big impact, um, within our, within our respective fields. And we rely heavily on, on these young persons coming in industry to backfill these positions as the prior generation ages out. And I'll tell you, you know, more now than ever, we don't have people to fill those positions. Uh, you know, so as far as the necessity of tech schools and, and the community create and the way they give back to their community, I just want to make sure we highlight the importance of that today. Cause I feel like it gets understated when we treat it like a building rather than the community it resides in and the ways it gives back to it. And out of respect for your time, I have nothing more to contribute today. Nothing more original, at least.
Thank you. We're gonna wrap it up. You had plenty of time. You did.
A very quick announcement from the COA.
No, 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 no. What do you mean the COA?
So we offer transportation.
Okay.
For the vote on January 23rd. It's in person, 11 to 7. So if you would like to vote whichever way that is, and you need a ride, please contact the Groveland COA and just, um, if you can make that happen.
What's the date?
January 23rd.
All right. Thank you. Well, that's gonna end it for tonight on that topic unless anyone else on the Board of Selectmen here wants to, uh, add anything else. But Rebecca.
I'm not a board member, but I did, I know that when we had discussed, you said I could make one of my comments during this time so that we didn't have to make it during town administrator time.
Yes, yes.
I did just want to say that, you know, a lot of people have come to my office and asked me just for clarification on, you know, what a yes vote means, what a no vote means, what it all means. And I think that one of the big things that I've been struggling with in terms of trying to find the information to relay to people is that if it is a, a no vote and it, and it does get turned down and we have to go forward with capital improvements, I think it would be really helpful for Whittier, uh, the school building to, to inform us how they plan to go about that. Um, the Whittier Agreement is not clear on how we incur capital debt for the district as a wa, uh, district wide. So we must go back to the statute. So they have a couple of options to come back to us if they were. I did ask the superintendent what the first project would be. She said that for fiscal year 25, they would move forward with the wastewater treatment facility. If that is the case, that would be a $12 million budget. That would be a $12 million project, which is obviously very, much less than what the entire project is, but as a, as a whole, that could accumulate. could accumulate, so I'm not saying it's not correct, but in terms of that approval process, are they going to come back to us in the same fashion that they did now, where they say to us that, hey, you're gonna go to a district wide vote? Or are they gonna come back to us in the fashion that they're gonna say, okay, this is contingent upon a Prop 2.5 override, so each individual community has an opportunity to go to a town meeting and see if it passes before they move forward? Or are they gonna use it as part of their operating assessment, and are they going to just assess us the capital improvement project? In that case, obviously, it would be an override as well for us, because it would be a large sum of number, money. So I think that when we talk about the project, I think one of the things that gets lost in that is that if it's a no, you're gonna get the capital, we have to fix the capital. And that's very much the case, I get that, but I think it's really unclear, and I feel bad when people come in to me and ask me, because they're like, well, what does that mean? And I'm like, well, I don't know, because I don't know what the Whittier School is going to do, and the school committee's gonna do. Are they just gonna assess us? Are they just going to come back to us for a district wide vote? Or are they gonna ask us and do a contingent upon a Prop 2.5 override, and go to the voters and see if they'll vote on it? So while the vote on the 23rd is specifically for the MSBA project and the school, I think that it would be helpful to have that information, because people are saying, well, what is it a no? What is it a no? Well, we don't want the misinformation, and we don't want the, you know, the walk around, it would be helpful for Whittier to decide what it is, or to communicate with us what it is that they're going to do for their next steps for capital. If it's the wastewater treatment, okay, fine, but how are you gonna go about it? Are you gonna go to us for a vote? Are you gonna do Prop 2.5? Or are you gonna just assess us? So that we can plan as well, and to communicate that with our voters, because they, it's information that's relevant to the conversation.
And if it's approved, what is the, what are the phases where the taxes escalate? So it's not all at once. It's not like, boom, here it is, 200 and something, or 100 million X. It's phased in over time, so until they get the funding, they don't know what the interest rate's gonna be, they don't know what the financing mechanism's going to be, so there's so many unknown variables, but they need the approval of the project to pass go, so to speak, right?
But it's just that when people come to the office and they ask me, what does this mean? I don't have any information to offer them. I don't have, I don't know what, if they vote no, will they get a chance to vote on this again? Not the project, but on the capital stuff that they say they're gonna have to. They're saying you either get the new school, or you get the capital. So people are saying, okay, well, if I, the new school is too much for me, and I say, fine, no, can we look at the capital? They're saying, well, how is that gonna be done? Do I get to vote on that? And I don't know, because, I mean, the-
So you don't know if the voters approve the project, if that's an approval for a blank check, so to speak, or up to the threshold that was discussed, they have 400 and something, and then a percentage. And you don't know the mechanism, whether or not, they just give us the assessment under a contractual, the regional agreement, yeah, pay the bill. And then, and then we have to, we as a town, have to decide whether or not it's gonna be debt exclusion, a bond, or a Prop 2.5 override, or cut the budget, like the fire chief was concerned about.
So, yes, so essentially, the vote for the school, if it passes, we are on the hook for that funding, no matter what.
No matter what.
So, no matter what, we will have to go through a debt exclusion, we wouldn't want to do a Prop override, because an override is forever, you'd have to do an under-ride to get it down. A debt exclusion is for the life of the loan. So we go for a debt exclusion. If the debt exclusion does not-
You just borrow the money.
If the debt exclusion does not pass, then we would need to cut the operating budget in order to move forward. If the vote on the 23rd is a no, it has not been clearly stated that, what mechanism they will move forward with the capital improvement. So just saying they're gonna go forward with the capital. But are they gonna assess us? Are they gonna go through a 2.5, like contingent upon a 2.5? Or are they gonna do a district wide vote again? It hasn't been very clear. Like, we know what happens if it's a yes, and the debt exclusion passes, or it doesn't pass, but if it's capital, it hasn't been really clearly stated as to what steps they're gonna take in order to get that capital approved. They can't just do a capital project, they still have to go through the proper approvals, the school committee has to vote for it, just like we, we have a capital budget, we have to put it forward, it has to get approved by town meeting, and then it can go forward. So it's one of those things, so I'm just a little confused as to what those steps are, and I just feel as though when people ask, I don't have the information. So I've been trying to get to Whittier to ask them what those steps are, so when people ask for a more educated understanding of what both, what happens here, what happens here, we can give that information to them.
They provided that information for you?
So I have not-
How the capital project will be funded? I mean, that seems like a critical question.
So that's, I've only received information that it would be the, the project for FY25 would be the wastewater treatment facility. I haven't received any other information, and when I default to town council, the only thing is, like we said, the regional agreement does not address it, it's only under state statute.
There you have it. If we're in the dark, our town administrator doesn't know how it's gonna be funded, then I guess we have to find out.
So it's just something I wanted to bring forward to the board, and say that it's something that we're just looking into, because I think that, to be fair and transparent and reasonable to people who ask, there is that unknown for the no. I don't know how that's gonna happen.
I understand. Lot of things to do with financing and the economy, inflation, there's so many variables, it's a moving target in many ways, until you, until you close the deal, it's not, it's not a finite number.
So just a question I wanted to make sure the board was aware of.
We're gonna wrap it up.
Anybody has any questions? Ask, right people.
Who do you call if they want to answer? How, what's the fund-
I'm gonna call Maureen Lynch.
Maureen Lynch, the superintendent of Whittier-
If people came coming to you, if it was me, I'd be on the horn immediately to get the answer. Because if people come to me multiple times-
People can call the superintendent and find out what the funding mechanism is. All right, we're gonna wrap that up. I think we, I think everyone had the opportunity to speak tonight. I think, you know, I can't go on advenitum here, so we, all good things must come to an end. What else do we have on our, on our docket? Yeah, grab Kathy and we'll-
Change Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
Hello.
Welcome back.
How was your nap?
Refreshing, thank you.
Kathy's back, we have a full, full board now. All right, help me out, help me, Mr. Wizard, where'd we leave off? Change from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Select, it says Selectmen, Catherine Ellis, but it's Selectwoman. What would you like to change in, why Kathy? This is your topic of the day.
So many good reasons, but really just one. The Massachusetts Association of Selectmen has changed its name to Select Board, Select Boards. Use of the term with the gender in it, man, it shows, it shows a bias, whether you like it or not, whether you feel it or not, it's there, and it needs to stop, it needs to be changed. So you can just go to a simple one word, Select Board, simple, easy. I looked into it, doesn't cost very much, it should require, I think, an article at the town meeting. It would be nice to see this board sponsor the article, instead of it coming in by petition. That would be nice, don't you think?
You talking to me?
Talking to the board, all four of them.
Ed, you got, you got a penny on there?
Go ahead. You? Well, if you look, if you look the term "Selectmen" up in the dictionary, it states, it's one of a Board of Town Officers chosen to manage certain public affairs. It's gender neutral. It, as other example, Clergymen, Councilmen, they're gender neutral. And I, I think we ought to stay the course. I read up some of this on it, and some of the communities have had to go through a home rule petition before the legislature in order to change it, I don't know if Groveland would have to or not. Would you know that?
That's my understanding of how you would officially change it, yes.
I'm sorry, what's that?
That's my understanding, is how you would officially change it, yes.
It would have to go to a home rule petition, yeah.
And that needs to be sponsored with our senator, or a-
So the representative-
But we couldn't do it, we, all we could do is kinda ask.
So we would have to vote at a town meeting in order to approve it, and to go to the state legislature for a home rule petition?
And it could be either our state rep or our state senator, either one could sponsor it in either house. Okay. May I answer your question?
No, nothing but political correctness run amok, and I don't, I don't think we need it.
Mark.
I'm good.
Jason, wanna chime in?
Yeah, it's definitely something I would support. I mean, I had used Select Board, and was told that since it's not in our bylaw, we can't, just like Select Woman, it's not in our bylaw, we can't. So I'm for the change, and I do understand Ed's point. Man used to be gender neutral, it just was another word for person. And that's no longer the case, that's changed. Since it's no longer the case, then I think we should do it along with it.
So you want to put it up to a vote?
No.
No, like, in front of town meeting, or?
We'll let people decide at town meeting, if that's what we decide, but I mean, I, you know. I mean, is it mankind, one small step for man, one giant leap for mankind, we should rewrite that? I mean, was Neil Armstrong sexist? I think people are super uptight, it's substance over form. We got an election coming up, if you wanted to be the Board of Select Woman, we need more than one woman on the board. People have equal opportunity in this town to run for office, for some reason. It's always four to one. We had Betty Gorsky, we had, Kathy's been here, she serves, but where are the rest of the women in town? If you want to be included, and you want equality in substance, get in the game, do the work, the opportunity exists. So I think the name is the form over the substance. I'm not for sexism, I don't think it's sexist, we're gonna have to reinvent our whole Webster's dictionary if we're gonna be PC. I'm not a walker, I mean, if there's something egregious that really offends somebody, then we do something about it. Mankind, womankind, I don't care if you call it the Board of Select Woman, I don't have any issues, you know, I don't, you know, call me a ham sandwich. But I understand what you're saying, Kathy, you know? It's just, where do we end with it? You know? You can't even call anyone he or she anymore without, like, somebody like objecting to it. Enough, that's my opinion, I got bigger fish to fry. All right, let's talk about inequality and some other issues in real substantive form. So that's my two cents on it. If the Board, you know, you know, if somebody wants to make a motion to adopt it, to send to town meeting on a home rule petition, that's why we're all here, we're all elected officials, we all have, you know, our points if you want it. So if you want to make a motion, Kathy, to, oh, we can wait until the time of the warrants and later on, when we do those, and maybe we bring it back up at that point in time, and we vote on it. And if, it could be either, what do we call it, positive, what do you call it?
Favor of?
Favorable, it means the Board supports it, or unfavorable, and if, and if it doesn't pass go here at the Board of Selectmen, I think you only need 10, 10 votes on a citizen's petition, anybody can go get 10 votes on a piece of paper and bring it to town, town meeting. So everyone has a voice, we do have democracy, I think it works, you don't always get what you want, it's just the way the cookie crumbles in life, but you got a chance to try if you want to. You know, I don't consider myself a sexist person, I believe in equality, I have a daughter, I just, you know, women, women, in my opinion, shouldn't just try to be equal, they should compete, you know? If you could be the best, be the best, don't settle for equality, settle for the best, you know? So I believe in competition, I don't believe in equal results, I believe in equal opportunity, and, you know, but I hear what you're saying, and maybe it's offensive to some people, you know, I just, I just think it's generic, like I said, is it mankind, you know, is it, you know, enough said on that, I'm repeating myself, right? I'm repeating myself. So would you like to bring it to a motion, or can we table it until we do warrants?
No, I'd just like to address some of the comments that I just made. So, sure, you can open up a dictionary.
Yeah.
You can also read your packet before a meeting.
Yeah.
You can educate yourself, or you can choose to close your eyes and pretend like nothing in this world has changed. I believe in showing respect to people, and being, showing respect to the position that I serve in, and this isn't about me, it's not about me being a woman, or not being a man, it's about being in touch with the times, and how people feel about things. It's important to respect people's rights, to be recognized by the pronouns that they choose, and we're all humans, okay? We all live and breathe, and we all deserve to be respected, and part of that is showing that in the change of a name, showing that we respect the right of every individual who lives in this town to run for this office, whether they are known as I am by the pronouns she and her, or whether they're not known by those pronouns. They live in this town, and they have a right to participate, and they have a right to serve, and they have a right to be treated with respect, and I don't know of any other board in this town that has a gender specific name, and I just think it's a small ask, it's a little thing, but if it's a big deal, then let it come from the people, because I'm sure it will, I have no doubt. I just thought that the Board might want to take the high road, and, and say, yes, this is a good thing to do. So rather than looking in a dictionary, I would recommend that you just educate yourselves a little bit about the world we live in, and all the different kinds of people, and that some of us were lucky enough to live in a town and be treated really well by everybody around us, but not everybody is treated really well, because of gender, because of skin color, because of all different reasons, and just one small step, one small step. Is it that difficult? If it is, if it requires me fighting up a big hill, no, I'll let it come from the people, because I have no doubt that it will.
That was number seven, what else I got, Mark?
Just number eight.
Another item's not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting.
Did you do number eight?
We did the reservation.
Right?
Yes, we did that.
I did want to update on old business real quick.
Okay.
Thank you. So we are having another meeting of the Trash and Recycling Committee on Monday, the 29th, and I will bring to them the question about what, if any, action we should take regarding the amount of trash versus recycling that's allowed to be put out. We are also having a meeting on January 30th of the regional, I'm not sure what we're called, the Regional Advisory Committee, Regional Agreement Committee, something like that. We're supposed to be finally going over the changes that were voted at this meeting months ago, and the idea of enrollment being something that's a little more clearly defined. So hopefully, we'll get to that on the 30th, and I'll be able to report back on that.
All right.
Yep.
Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. Yeah, we need some rocks alt on the stairs and the driveway out there, because that wasn't anticipated, the, where's the rocks alt? Almost broke my neck. Anyways, Kathy, you got anything not anticipated before the ice storm?
No.
Jason?
No.
Mark?
I'm good.
Edward?
Negative.
Town Administrator time.
I do not have any updates, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
9:20.
We're all burnt out on, will you? Thank you. Kathy?
Nope, just next agenda, if you could put Regional Agreement and Trash and Recycling, we should be able to, you can put under Old Business.
With your name on it.
Well, you can put under Old Business if you want, I don't know what we'll have to report, but-
All right, we'll add those to the back.
We'll put something up, we're working on it.
Time limit, you know, like, you know, two minutes left.
I got a sand timer, if you want to borrow it.
Yeah, those little, like, you know, chest, speed chest.
Ooh, better.
Something like that. You guys have? Selectwoman's time. Jason?
Yes, I know that the town clerk had pointed out that the Board had made mention about the clerks picking the time, that was me, I was-
Picking the time for what?
For the town vote on the 23rd, that was me.
You?
Yeah, apparently I said that.
11 o'clock?
But, uh-
You roll out of bed, it was 11 in the morning?
That was something that I discussed at the last meeting, so I want to apologize if there was any confusion, because I knew that there was a timeframe, and I don't believe I mentioned it last meeting. And so that timeframe really put a lot of restrictions- And so that timeframe really put a lot of restrictions on when the vote could take place and the timeframe that it could take place. So I wanted to apologize if there was any, any, any misunderstanding there. And I also wanted to thank the highway department and the electric, um, for the incredible job they did around town during the storms.
All right, Mark?
I'm good.
Edward?
Also.
My Selectmen time.
Can't wait.